Order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission Wednesday, November 20th. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card, little green cards out in the foyer, and file it with Sherri. Cards are available there. Speakers should state name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. And while Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and obey the orders of the chair. Oh, I love that part. Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Corbin.
Here.
Commissioner Powers and Lottis absent.
Thank you. If you'll all join me for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Do we have anyone? I have no cards for public communications. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, then we'll move on to our consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, October 16th, 2019. Do we have any questions of staff or changes or additions to the minutes? Then we'll entertain a motion for approval.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the Ojai Planning Commission dated October 16th, 2019.
I will second.
Very good. Any discussion? Sherri, a roll call, please.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi.
Yes. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair Quilisi?
Yes.
If I may, if you can indulge me for just one moment, I'd like to introduce our new community development manager, Lucas Seibert.
Oh, I met Lucas at the desk the other day, yes. Welcome.
He will be your staff. He'll be the staff to the Planning Commission and managing the community development process here in Ojai. And with that, from here on, I'm going to turn the agenda over to him and I'm just going to be supporting, a supporting role.
Okay. Welcome. And where have you been before?
Some of my background relates and takes me back to, I spent a couple of years, several years actually, in Clermont, roughly 11 years.
Clermont by Pomona?
Correct.
Or Clermont by San Diego?
Not by San Diego. Spelled differently too, slightly differently. And then I dipped my toes in Riverside for about a year, the city of Riverside, and spent the last two years, little over two years, in Laverne, which is where I lived before with my family before we uprooted and now, now I'm here. Been here for about a month. So if you're smelling something, it's the new car smell that you're getting right now. It's still new.
That's you.
It's still fresh. It hasn't worn off yet, so, thank you.
Well, good. Glad to have you here, sir. All right, next is our public hearing item on a conditional use permit, CUP 19-006, wherein we consider a conditional use permit to allow onsite sales of beer and wine to guests lodging at the Caravan Outpost 317 Bryant Street apartment, our assessor's parcel 0230150205. Could we hear from staff, please?
Yes. Suzanne Regal, case planner for this project, going through. Just want to give you a brief history. In February of this year, the commission considered a text amendment to allow onsite alcohol sales for CUPs in the M1 MPD zone. After we had that discussion, this commission recommended that council allow onsite alcohol sales be limited to beer and wine only upon approval of a CUP for sites located in the M1 zone operating as an existing transient occupancy use. That means Caravan Outpost. Mid-year, council adopted that recommendation and the amendment was made to the land use table in the ordinance. On October, or not October, on November 5th, an application was submitted on behalf of Caravan Outpost for CUP to allow the sales of alcohol for onsite consumption at Caravan Outpost. And this site is roughly 2/3 of an acre, improved with 11 space RV campground with 14 onsite parking spaces. What they are proposing to do is basically install a cooler, an appliance, within the existing building that will provide refrigeration for onsite unopened containers of alcohol, beer and wine, for sale. And then the customer could leave the store and actually consume it on the site. The CUP is the only item before the commission is for alcohol. We are not revising the conditions of approval for the operation of Caravan Outpost as a campground. These are supplemental conditions that are being recommended in findings. It's important to note that the outdoor recreation area for Caravan Outpost is approximately 80 feet away from the closest residence, and that's from the northwest corner of the property, to a property that is...
On the east side of Fulton.
Yeah, it's a mixed-use industrial complex. There's a residence back there. After receiving approval by the city, the applicant will then be required to obtain the appropriate license from Alcohol Beverage Control Department of the State of California. And the proposed resolution contains findings for the CUP as well as environmental exemption from further environmental review under California Environmental Quality Act because it's an existing facility and it'll have a negligible or no expansion of activity on the site. The commission should open the public hearing to receive testimony. And if it's the pleasure of the commission to approve this project, adopt the draft resolution 19006 that's attached to your staff report. The applicant is here, Brad Stewart, if you have any questions or if he wants to provide clarification on the application. With that, if the commission has any questions that they would like to direct to staff, I am here to answer those.
Questions for staff? I have, I have a couple. The, I noticed you mentioned the residence about 80 feet from Caravan Outpost. I walked those blocks just the other day and I noticed, much to my surprise, that there are in fact several residences on the east side of Fulton.
Yes.
And I thought that was all M1, or is everything grandfathered?
Correct.
In, in the M1? Okay. Is, is the citation of the distance from this parcel because there is a provision in the code or in state law or something about residences and, and operations selling alcohol? I was just curious why, why the distance was cited?
It's not, I don't believe it's specifically cited.
Just general background?
It's just general compatibility of uses.
Okay.
For consideration by the commission.
Okay. Page three of eight in the staff report, the off-street parking.
Yes.
It says the required parking is one parking space for each living-sleeping unit, so that's the 11 airstream trailers, I guess. Plus one for each five living-sleeping units. And is that rounded up or down?
So that would be two spaces.
That would be two. Okay. If they had 13, then it would round up to three?
If you're .5 or more, you would round up.
Yeah, okay. All right. That's fine. And I noticed that you spoke of the addition of an appliance. Is that, is that something that requires a CUP to put an appliance or are we just talking about putting the beer and wine in an appliance that can be installed by right?
The only physical change that will be occurring on the site is the installation of this appliance, the cooler. The conditional use permit is actually for the onsite sales of alcohol.
Okay. So they don't require our permission to put...
The appliance in.
The cooler in, just to put beer and wine for sale in it?
Correct.
Okay. I noticed also, the property is located along the Ojai Valley Trail, further encouraging the use of alternative modes of transportation in lieu of a vehicle. As I understood it, the sales here was to be onsite sales for onsite consumption to guests and guests of guests. So I guess maybe guests of guests might walk or ride to the property, but presumably guests would have driven there. Is that...
Right. The physical change does not trigger any need for additional parking onsite.
Right.
But we are just noting that they are within a reasonable walking distance to public transportation, the Ojai Valley Trail. They could bike to this destination, etc.
I live about 3/4 of a mile that way and I walk by the Ojai. I walk along the trail and up Bryant Street regularly, so I know it's certainly within range. Last, last question that I have here right now, page five of eight in the staff report, last paragraph, and attachment D, page one, paragraph B under the fourth whereas, I think there's a not missing.
It's G. It's the last attachment.
In that the allowance of onsite consumption of alcohol, it says, will increase the number of guests lodging. I think it will not increase.
Correct.
And, and I think you need to correct that in the resolution because that's what really counts.
Yes.
Okay, any other, any other questions of staff? If not, could we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Ryan Blatts on behalf of Caravan Outpost.
Oh, okay.
Really, that is, I represent them, so I really am just here for any questions and clarifications. This issue has really been vetted when the text amendment was done and I really don't see any need to, I don't want to waste the commission's time. If there are specific questions, I also brought Brad, who is the operator, so he has any, if there's anything I can't answer, that he can. With that, I just want to say thank you to Suzanne for all her work on it and welcome to Joe and Lucas. But if there's any questions, I could take those, but we really don't have a statement that's outside the scope of what you've seen in the application.
Yeah, okay. Any, any questions for the applicant?
I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I recall in a, when we were going through all of this in months past, the, the other, the other owner, Chet Hilgers, said that they were occasionally having special events there at the Caravan Outpost for which they applied for and received a temporary use permit from the city?
Yes.
Is that still going?
That's correct.
Is that still going on now?
Yes.
Okay, and that's a less cumbersome than having the guests go offsite to, to acquire alcohol and bring it back, but it's still an expensive exercise, I would guess.
The temporary use, the temporary use permits are not for consumption of alcohol on the site by, by, people are staying there. They're for specific events. Some of those events, because the way they are publicly managed, because, for example, if a nonprofit group comes in and hosts an event there, they are able to get a license from ABC that it will allow them to serve alcohol at that event. That is completely different than the establishment itself selling alcohol on a regular basis.
And that's different from, from the establishment getting a temporary use permit?
Correct. In fact, in those, what the, if you're a hotel or you're a motel or you're any other event center, you can have the applicant who's coming to your place to host an event, apply to ABC for a temporary alcohol license. And that's the only alcohol sales or consumption that have occurred on that property. Question set. Consumption is allowed with, they bring their own things and they're staying at the hotel. But if it's, any, any, the only sales or any distribution of any alcohol has only occurred at those type of events, under those permits.
Okay.
This would be a permanent permit that would allow them to do that on a regular basis and mostly to keep people from having to walk down to other liquor stores on downtown, you know, downtown Ojai, where it's kind of a dangerous walk and having to travel down there.
It's a good, it's a good half-mile to Pat's at least.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And if it's open and that kind of thing. So really, it's, it's not a huge economic driver for their business. That's why they don't care about anybody outside of who's staying there, really consuming anything. It's just about really trying to make it easier for everybody who comes there that doesn't bring their own alcohol to be able to consume it and purchase it onsite.
I don't have any more questions of the applicant.
I'm fine.
You're fine?
That is for you.
Okay. I did have a couple other questions for staff. Thank you very much, Ryan. Couple other questions regarding the resolution itself. We mentioned the first one in, on page one. What real conditions are there besides sales only to guests and guests of guests? There's a lot of stuff listed here, but the rest of it seems like it's administrative rather than substantive, if you will. Is there anything else there? Okay. And we get over to community, this is attachment D, page three, the Community Development Department Final Conditions of Approval. Condition one is within 180 days of the conditional use permit approval, the permit shall be exercised in compliance with Article 32. This is of Title 10, or it's, article, it's Title 10, Chapter 2, Article 32, I think. Or the permit shall be deemed void. Is that 180 days in condition one the same as the six months in condition three, where it says the applicant must obtain the unnecessary license and approvals from California ABC? Or does the 180 days in condition one start immediately upon our action if we approve the CUP? And what happens if there's a delay in the ABC processing? Could the applicant in fact lose the CUP for lack of exercise?
They would request a time extension prior to the expiration.
Okay. And that would be a director's decision?
I would have to look at the ordinance language.
The two are independent of each other, just to clarify.
They are, okay.
They are independent. You're looking at 180 days that we have currently within our municipal code. You're looking at something outside of our municipal code, which really is governed by ABC.
Right.
And that's making sure that they have the necessary requirements, which is independent of what we have within our municipal code.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't want to see applicants caught between two potentially conflicting timelines from independent agencies, that's all.
That seems kind of weird to write it that way. Could we, could we assume applying for the alcohol board license would fill that qualification of exercising the permit as long as they've applied for it within that 180 days?
You're talking about applying for and to ABC.
The ABC permit, yeah, yes.
The license. Actually, the applicant, I'd just like to clarify, have you applied to the, to ABC for your licensing at this point?
We previously applied and then were triggered to come back to the city and go through this process. And so the net effect is we would have to restart the application process.
Right.
There's no pending application. There was at one point, yeah.
And, and ABC says you can't apply to us until the city says it's okay?
Yes.
No, we can apply, we just can't get approved. And what happened before is there was an application at ABC and when it came back for zoning clearance with the city, it was denied because there wasn't allowed alcohol sales in the M1. So it's now that that text amendment has occurred on the zoning, now they, now once the CUP is approved, the ABC application process will start. We could have started it sooner, but it wouldn't have made sense until this, until the commission had approved the CUP to go back to ABC or we'd be potentially stuck in the same position of work.
Sure.
Staff, do you have, you have some experience with ABC? Do they typically take six months to get something done?
No. So previously, when they applied, because they were not able to get a conditional use permit approved within 30 days.
Right.
ABC would not hold their pending application. They had them withdraw their application and resubmit once they had the valid approvals in place. So in condition one, we have 180 days to effectuate that permit. If they apply to ABC within that 180 days, they've effectuated the permit, they've begun the process. And then from the time they apply to ABC, they have six...
They've begun to exercise the permit.
Right.
By applying to ABC.
Right. And once they've applied to ABC, they have six months to get their, their license.
Okay. My last question on page three of five, item five at the very bottom, it says, "This CUP shall remain for the length of the CUP unless revised." And I'm confused by the language. Could you help me?
It should say, "This CUP shall run with the land unless revised, modified."
Yeah, I, I will have to admit, the language is a little wonky.
Yeah.
But just to...
I'm easily confused, I'll admit that right up front.
Just to clarify, this, this type of language is in our municipal code in terms of it running with the land.
Well, that's, that's something Suzanne and I are working on.
So basically, you're inserting, or saying, "This, this CUP shall remain for the length of the land CUP?" Or something similar?
The CUP goes with the land.
Yeah, the CUP runs with the land. Not with the applicant or with the, yeah.
But...
I didn't know if we needed to edit any of the language so that when we, if we do approve, that we needed to note that.
Well, that's why, I want to be careful because this is a resolution. This is going to become, this is going to become law in effect.
I agree.
So is the, is the plain meaning of this, "The CUP shall remain indefinitely unless revised"? Is that what, is that what this means?
Or the CUP for the land use is revised.
It really, it really gets down to, I'm not quite sure what they're looking into, but it really gets down to it running with the land. I think that was the intent of what was, what was listed here as number five.
Right. So, so how, how would we revise item five here so that it's plain language?
Staff? We'll revise it to be consistent with what is actually listed in the ordinance. It states, and I'm just looking for it right here. It basically states that the CUP shall run with the land and remain in effect unless the CUP is modified. And if there's a change in operator, then there would need to be a zoning clearance to verify that they're still in compliance with the conditions of the CUP. But I will find the actual language that's in the ordinance and put that in.
Okay, yeah, I, I just want to make sure that what we're voting on is, is proper.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
So is that going to be revised?
So, so what, so how is five going to read then?
She's got to work on it.
The, the CUP shall remain...
The commission could, could entertain a motion as they, as the commission would be making a recommendation or even making a decision on tonight.
Well, in this case, it's a decision, it's not a recommendation, so I'm worried about it.
Correct. Stating that the, that the language within the municipal code remained consistent with the condition number five, meaning that that condition ensures that it's running with the land as we've been discussing.
And the land's not going anywhere, that's why I...
Precisely.
It's, it's, it's a permanent CUP unless modified.
Or banned.
Or, or, oh, or subsequently banned, which would be a serious modification.
So this is a CUP on the CUP, basically. In other words, they have a CUP for the use of the land and the CUP is on top of that.
For the alcohol use. They're two separate.
Correct. Two separate CUPs with, with separate conditions.
But that's not the way this reads, so that's...
Correct. We're going to modify that.
But that's the way it should read.
Yeah, that's, that's what confused me is the CUP occurs later in the first phrase and I'm not sure which CUP that applies to.
Couldn't we just say for the length of the CUP on the land?
That the CUP, that's not the CUP for the recreational vehicle part.
All right, and see how it's written.
Yes, it sounds like if we approve this and we want to, then we'll reflect on number five and say, revise, reflect the language in the municipal code and that staff will do that.
Yeah.
But your, what you're seeing is you'd like to see it first.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know what it is. I, I trust staff to make it consistent, that's true.
So we just, I think we just need to say that if we decide to approve it, we need to acknowledge that and then...
It'll, right. Be revised to be consistent with Section 10-2.2413, conditional use permit to run with the land. A conditional use permit granted in compliance with the provisions of this article shall continue to be valid upon change of ownership of the site, business, service, use or structure, which was the subject of the permit application. The new owner-operator shall file for and receive a zoning clearance and agree in writing to all applicable conditions and operating standards before reuse reopening under the new ownership.
Okay.
And that conditional use permit is recorded with the county recorder.
Okay. Okay.
And we will clarify by stating the number of the alcohol CUP in that condition.
Terrific.
Versus, if you see condition number four, talks about the conditions in this resolution are supplemental to and do not replace the previously approved CUP under PC Resolution 13-20.
Right. Because 13-20 established the facility.
The RV campground, correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, so as I see it, we have two modifications to the resolution itself. First, inserting not in line five of item B under the fourth whereas on the first page, and then staff revising the wording of item five on page three to be consistent with the municipal code 10-2.2413. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Good, unless we have any other...
No, these are all for animal keeping and this...
Mr. Chair, we do have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Is that what you're going to?
I'm sorry, yes. You're right.
Yes.
You're right. Okay. Well, we've cleared up things with staff. Then I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Blatts, did you intend to speak as part of the public hearing as well or speak for the applicant?
No, that was it, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and we'll come back to the commission for discussion and entertaining a motion of some sort.
I would just like to make a motion that we approve CUP 19-006 to allow onsite sales of alcohol for Caravan Outpost, assessors' parcel number 0230150205 with two revisions as discussed. Do I have to elaborate? Okay.
I, I think that should be sufficient.
I will second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There you go. Enjoy. All right. Our next agenda item is a discussion item. That is, we will have a discussion tonight. We want to gather public input on the topic and determine whether or not we can come up with a good set of rules to recommend being changes to the municipal code or whatever, which is currently silent on animal keeping. We are not making a final decision tonight. We're not making a specific change to the municipal code, but we are trying to understand the public's feeling on this stuff and then leaven that with our own judgment on the subject. So, the, the recommendation from staff is to review the animal keeping ordinance term sheet, which is provided in the packet, you should have seen it on the website, and excuse me, and to provide input to staff to draft, prepare a draft animal keeping ordinance for review by this commission and recommendation to the city council. So could we hear from staff, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Lucas Seibert, community development manager here with the city of Ojai. Really, and... Really, and Chair Quillisi, thank you, it is really a discussion. We're looking for a healthy discussion tonight, because really what we're looking for here is some feedback. We have provided a term sheet, if you will, that kind of begins to lay, I would say, a foundation, but that foundation could very easily and very quickly be reformed to the liking, and then the mortar and the bricks begin to be built to begin the formation of how this animal keeping ordinance will end up being built into something that's recommended by this commission, and then ultimately before city council for consideration. The process itself did start on October twenty second, when the matter went before a discussion to the city council. At that point, city council, after having some discussion, made the determination to bring it to this commission for further consideration and discussion. Initially, when staff was looking at this, we realized that an ordinance to this commission did not make sense, but a term sheet did, so that we could begin to have that discussion for tonight. The matters before, for discussion tonight are really kind of open-ended. We do have very limited use components for animal keeping, and that really kind of falls into agricultural and single-family residential, ranging from ten thousand square feet in size all the way up to four acres. And that is the zoning designation components for single-family versus agricultural. We don't have any standards as it relates to multifamily or even, so what I'm getting at is, really this is focused on single-family and agricultural, because that's really what we have on the books right now from a use standpoint. And really, we're looking to fill in the development standards as it relates.
Okay. I do note, in the staff report, it says the county, the city council adopted an ordinance in nineteen eighty, a comprehensive update of the zoning ordinance and included specific things. And in your term sheet, we've got chapter four of title five, and then under chapter two of title ten, there's really just the definition of animal keeping-
Right.
...and the land use tables without any standards, simply a definition.
It's good information to start on, but it certainly isn't something that we can regulate. And I think that's the issue that we're having right now, is the regulation component of it is difficult.
And even the definition of animal keeping, as I recall, and I read it a couple of times, is that it refers to non-commercial animal keeping, not commercial animal keeping. And the code thus appears to be silent on commercial animal keeping.
Correct, and that's open for discussion for tonight as well.
So, if you had a riding academy, or you had a puppy mill, the code is currently silent on either of those, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Just a comment, and I don't know if this helps, and I think this kind of ties into what Lucas was just saying. So we have this term sheet, and I'm just wondering, would it be a good idea to just kind of go through it? I mean, there's something that we may be worth discussing, or we might say, "Oh, we agree to that," or that, or we have questions about something, just to kind of give us a format?
Reasonable basis for asking questions of staff, and I have a few myself, so-
Yeah, and I have a couple of things too, and I'm sure Bobby does most likely.
One other option-
And the staff has a better idea.
Well, one other option, I don't know if it's better or worse, but one other option might be to take testimony if it's at the commissioner's, at the commission's discretion. It's not a public hearing, but we could take some testimony, get some input from the public, some feedback, and then go through, based on that, that might help form the policies.
Right.
Okay, I'm not opposed to that. I tend to like it if we can, if we can bring up some, at least, facts of where we are currently, and then at least, we and anyone who wishes to give us public input, we're not just swapping ignorance. But what do you think?
I wouldn't be opposed to allowing the public to come up first.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Well, we'll come back to it, and questions for staff and the rest after we have the public hearing. Then I'll open the public hearing. I have four cards. I'll take them, take speakers in the order that I received the cards. And first up is David Silva, and reserved for next speaker, front row here, Elizabeth Silva. David Silva?
We wanted to come up together, because we just, we have a-
It's okay.
Have at it, then.
And we didn't review the term paper, so we're a little bit under manned, underinformed at this point, so.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to start it off. My name is Elizabeth Pepinsilva, and my husband and I have lived on Drown Avenue since 2012. I'm also a lifelong equestrian, and I've actually owned a horse here in Ojai, although not on my property on Drown. And I also helped teach riding at Ojai Valley School for the first few years that I lived here. We're asking tonight, the planning commission, to please create a much-needed animal keeping ordinance, an ordinance that Ojai once had, and until apparently an administrative oversight removed it at the end of 2003. And this is an ordinance that every city in Ventura County apart from Ojai has on their books. We requested this new ordinance have rules about the type and amount of animals allowed per acre, manure cleanup, dust mitigation, and fly control. We feel that an animal keeping ordinance will foster best practices for animal keeping, help promote neighborhood harmony, and make people, animals, and the environment more healthy. For the past three years, a lack of an ordinance has directly affected the life of both my husband and myself, and also our neighbors along Drown, going all the way to Grand. In late 2016, a person bought a property on Daly Road, which is zoned for livestock and animals, and it abuts our backyards on Drown. And since then, although I have to say that this has been resolved in the last few weeks, because the property owner has sold the property and removed the animals. But since then, there have been up to six horses, four goats, a hog, half dozen chickens, and several dogs, all on only one point three acres. Some of this land, of course, is partially taken up by the house. Too many animals on too small of a space, and it quickly killed all the plants and compacted the soil, creating enormous amount of dust, which turns to runoff in the rainy season. To make things worse, the manure is cleaned up infrequently and put in a giant pile on the property line closest to all of our backyards and to, close to Fox Bronca, a seasonal waterway that runs between our properties and eventually ends up in the Ventura River. Since a single horse poops fifty pounds of manure per day, this means up to two thousand pounds of manure per week sit in the sun, drying up, turning to dust, and all this dust has been blowing onto our houses for the past three years. Not only did this situation affect the environment, it affected my health. I was a healthy, athletic woman who never had breathing problems until the owners moved in to the property in 2016. And this constant exposure to their manure dust has caused me to have constant causing and weaving when I exercise, and at times, my speech is constricted. We also had the dust tested by an independent environmental testing company recommended to us by the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District, and every test swab they did along the entire length of our house came back positive for bacteria. My doctor, who works for the Ventura County, had my lungs tested, and they showed that I had a chronic lung infection, which was directly linked to the manure dust. My husband and I tried, and our neighbors tried for two years to talk to the homeowner to no avail. It was only in March 2019, when it was clear that the owner of this property was not going to be a good neighbor, and we all turned to the city and filed complaints. Since we filed the complaints in March, there have been many emails between us and various city officials. In those emails, much has been made of the homeowner's right to have horses on their property due to the zoning. Do you want to take over?
Sure. You may notice that the light went from red to green, you're getting your second three minutes now.
We'd like to point out that one's health and ability to breathe properly is a right, a basic human right at that. Owning livestock and horses and keeping them on one's property is a privilege, a privilege that not everyone in Ojai gets due to the zoning of our community. With privileges come responsibilities. The responsibility not to have those animals impact those of us who live around them, and if a person will not take responsibility for the animals, then it's up to the city and its hired officials to have ordinances and rules on the books so that they have the tools they need to protect the health of the citizens as well as the environment, which is why creating this new animal keeping ordinance is so important. We want to make one point very clear, absolutely no one on Drown Avenue wants horses and/or livestock to be banned on Daly or anywhere else within city limits, nor are we asking for the zoning to be changed. In fact, my husband, my wife and I brought our property, knowing full well that the surrounding properties were zoned for livestock and horses. It was actually one of the reasons we bought the house, because we love all animals and we enjoy seeing and interacting with horses owned by the former owners on the Daly property. While there was a little dust and smell, it was minimal because the former owners cleaned up their manure on a daily basis, watered down their riding ring for a bit before they rode, and had reasonable amount of animals for the size of the property that they had. From 2012 until the end of 2016, when the property was sold, we all got along. We're simply asking horse and livestock owners to be good neighbors, have a reasonable amount of animals for the size of the lot they own, and do best practices on their property, keep down dust, smell, flies, and manure runoff. None of these requests seem outrageous, they just seem like common courtesy and what is best for the health of the animals, the environment, and everyone who lives and visits in Ojai. And that's it.
I just want to clarify that the people that we're talking about were the previous owners to the ones that just sold the property.
Understand, understand. Before you go, any questions for these folks? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Lucas.
Appreciate your opinions. You don't have any particular opinions as to the standards, how many animals per acre, or anything of that sort? Because that's part of what we want to get through today, is making some, at least, general recommendations for putting together an ordinance.
I personally feel, or we personally feel, that two horses per acre is a reasonable amount, or four goats, one cow, you know, it just-
Cows produce more manure than horses, or?
I only know about horses and goats, I can't speak to cows, so I'm not-
I'm curious why you'd say two horses and one cow.
The horse, so we checked in with several of our real estate friends and asked them about the horse keeping, or that, you know, what is the rules about horse keeping, and they all parroted back the same equation, every one of them.
Two horses per acre.
Two horses per acre. So when they're selling properties in the city's limits, that's what they're parroting back to their potential clients.
We all recognize there's nothing in the ordinance right now.
Well, they don't.
They don't know that.
An informal, informal standard.
That it refrained from another municipality.
They actually thought that it was still on the books. A lot of these, the realtors that we spoke with have been here for a long time, and they did not realize that it was removed in 2003 due to a clerical error. So they've been telling their clients up until recently-
Us, including.
-that you could have two horses per acre. What I think that they're confused about is that Ventura County has a rather complicated system, but it does work out to about two horses per acre.
Okay.
So I think that's where the confusion is.
All right.
And there's also, there's also aspects of this that factor into air pollution control regulations covered in the book, as well as stormwater runoff pollution control items that are already on the books as well.
So that's, the air pollution is with the county, and the state water quality control board has rules on the books about stormwater runoff and total maximum daily loads regarding livestock. And the reason I know that is because I've made several, actually eight films for the state water quality control board about stormwater runoff, including livestock.
Okay, and, I'm sorry, I don't need to preempt your questions, we'll get to them all. In your previous testimony, you said that the previous owners cleaned up the manure every day and watered down the riding ring.
Yes, so we had, when we first moved in, we had-
There've been three owners, there're the good ones-
There's been two since we've been there. So there was, well, I guess three, because today, literally today, the new owners took ownership of the house.
Okay.
So there was Sharon and David, who owned the house until the beginning of 2016, when they both passed away. Their heirs sold the house to this woman who owned it from December 2016 until yesterday, and today we have new owners.
Okay. You spoke of having worked around the horses at Ojai Valley School.
Mm-hmm.
What's the policy over there? Do they clean up the manure every day and haul it away?
Oh, yeah. We cleaned it twice a day, and we also watered down the arena for half an hour before we had-
That's an area I walk through as well.
The kids.
Okay.
And, I mean, you can tell, you walk by the school, there's not, you don't smell it, you don't see dust in the air. They're doing best management practices, practices that most stables, and actually most responsible horse and livestock owners in this valley do. It's just, there's certain folks that feel that they don't need to follow best practices, and that's why an ordinance is needed. So when those people choose not to do best practices, the ordinance is there to make them.
So you can speak with some authority about horses, at least, in animal keeping? Other animals, not so much? I mean, I have relatives in Indiana that have a pig farm, and they seem to follow a very different set of rules back there, because you know you're nearing the place when you're a quarter mile away.
Right, but you're also not, I mean, we have a situation, Bobby lives on Daly, and, sorry, Commissioner Corbin, and that we have, you know, houses all right next to each other. It's not like the East End, where there's room between each other. And so the impact of animal owners is greater than it would be if we were on the East End and had more room between us, or like, in the case of your-
If you were in the East End, you'd be outside the city as well, probably.
Well, yes, but what I'm trying to point out is that it's more important when you're within city limits in most cases, because we are more close together. And so what we do impacts our neighbors more. And so it's important to have these kinds of ordinances, so we aren't, you know, it's been really awful to have this antagonistic relationship with this person that used to own the Daly House. I mean, we tried for two years to talk with her about this, and she just kept blowing us off. And it's not nice to live in a house with your neighbor not liking you.
Sure, sure.
So if there was ordinances, this could have much more quickly been shut down, and not have to sit there and have this bad feeling between the people on Drown, having to deal with this person who did not want to clean up their poop. I mean, she would leave it, leave two thou, in one week, her animals would poop up to two thousand pounds of manure. That is a lot of manure to sit there drying up in the sun and blowing, and the way the wind blows, it all blows towards Drown. And that's not fair.
Okay, just one last question that I have, at least. You said in your testimony that when you bought the property, you recognized that the property, the adjacent property was zoned for animal keeping.
Animals and livestock. I mean, it was obvious, there was horses right there, we didn't need to-
I'm curious, for staff, where does that come from? Is that just the land use tables say animal keeping is a permitted activity in R one-half or R one, or whatever this is?
Again, that's part of the problem here, is that some of this is legal non-
Or is this a misconception from the state before 2003, or?
Animal keeping was allowed exactly before 2003, and then when that section was removed, for whatever reason, it remained as a legal non-conforming use. But then we didn't replace it with any alternative standards. We don't know why, we don't know why. We have no record as to why. And that's what we're trying to fix now. And one of the things I think is great about this discussion here is it gives us, starts to build, as Mr. Seibert said, we have a foundation, and we're starting to build the framework of an ordinance, and some of these issues are, as we discussed with the title ten, land use ordinances, is looking at impacts, looking at these things as impacts, not, you know, whether they're horses, or mules, or donkeys, or cows, what is the impact of that particular animal on the surrounding area? Um, and then that kind of leads me into impacts manure management, that, that leads us into, um, a second discussion of, uh, combinations of animals. So, um, again, I think the county's ordinance is a little too complicated where, you know, when one large horse equals two pigs, they use as animal.
The arithmetic is simple enough, but the definitions of large, medium and small animals are a little vague.
Correct, correct, we start talking animal units, it gets very, very complicated. But, uh, most cities, um, and ordinances which I'm familiar with have these, that, we will have a, a standard. For example, it could be two ho-, two large animals, I don't know if I want to say horses, two large animals per acre, might be. But we can also say a combination of, uh, uh, you can have two large animals and six small, and we're just talking farm animals, not pet animals here. Um, two large animals and six small farm animals and we'll have a list of samples of what those animals are, whether pigs or goats or sheep or, or whatnot.
Yeah, okay.
And, and that's what we'll start to, as we receive input from the commissioner from the public.
Be able to start putting together.
We'll form, we'll form that, that, uh, ordinance and bring that back to the, the commission and hopefully it'll be something very close to what's.
I mean, to me, the bottom line is, is that when a neighbor's actions start to impact another neighbor, neighbor's health and the doctors and, uh, independent testing has shown a direct correlation, that needs to be stopped. I mean, it says on the city's own website that, um, the ordinances are there to protect the health of the citizens of Ojai.
Absolutely.
And so that's why I feel so strongly about this, this, I'm better now because there hasn't been any, the animals were removed a couple of weeks ago.
Glad to hear that, yeah.
And, and, and as I mentioned, manure management, dust control, any of that will, will be, as well as, and, and I'm sure we'll have this discussion as we proceed, um, noise, roosters, peacocks.
Right.
Things like that, those are also impacts which, which affect the neighborhood. So we're going to be looking at all of these issues and, and combining them into this ordinance and it won't be perfect because it doesn't exist, but
We'll try.
We'll get something real close and, and something enforceable and understandable.
That's, that's what we're shooting for, okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have a card here from Bob Daddy.
Good evening, um, I have a couple of special little issues here, um. We continue to recite things that are no longer enforce or invalid and we tell the community somehow that you must take this step, you must take this step and you must take this step. It's been sixteen years, so my neighbor across the street, Catty Corner, um, had a problem with dogs and was told you have to get three neighbors to sign up. Which is kind of interesting, cause anybody can call and have somebody harassed for code enforcement, just takes one call. If you have an animal problem, it takes three and that strongly needs to be looked at now. I've been told it is and isn't, so I do know Chair, that your father-in-law and I had to go to a very long complicated problem with some neighbors. And so we had to get a city councilman, we had to get the city treasurer and three people had to sign up, cause we had a herd of dogs, not even a pack, a herd. So when you have that many dogs that attack people every morning at the fence line when they walk by for years on eucalyptus, it gets to be a problem. Now, I, I think part of the problem is, is the fence height and size and dogs in the front yard. And again, it's, it's this dog fence war, you know, when you're walking by on the sidewalks, I think that should be consideration, I think there needs to be some type of limit. Um, as, as far as the emu on the corner, as far as the peacock on the corner, as, as far as coming up with special things. I really think you need to restrict, I hate the word restrict, but you need to look, you need to understand that the corner lot across from Sea Fresh down three or four rows or three or four houses is a four thousand square foot lot. The lot across the street from me is fourteen acres.
Yeah.
And so when you come up with these things, be careful with not having a herd. Now, they're very responsible, they have some people that run it, it's excellent, everything's terrific, everything's cleaned up, they check on them two, three times a day, I mean, they do, they are good neighbors, they are the best neighbors, they do what they need to do. But I, I think what really has to happen here, and Chair, since we're taking testimony and we only have one other speaker, I hope I can have more than three minutes.
Well, they each had three minutes, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I think what you need to do is you can, need to consider that we have around twenty-six, Kathy, Chair Nolan, twenty-six or twenty-eight distinct neighborhoods.
Oh, in our.
And, and those neighborhoods, because of proximity, lot line, um, separation of lots makes it very difficult. So when you drive to the end of Drown Street, and I have a nice picture, and you look at the two houses, the separation between roof edge and roof edge is less than two feet. So when you're allowing, when houses are that close and you're allowing two large pets and four large pets and, and, and the old rule used to be you get one horse for every fifteen thousand square feet. There was a whole bunch of different kind of misconceptions about what's going on. I mean, take a look at what this thing is and take a look and see how many are impacted. And I would, which, and I've had a discussion with the city, one of the things that I would hope before you get very far in this, that we would go ahead and take a look and see how many one acre parcels out of the thirty-five hundred parcels we have in the city, we have. And, and take a look what that size is, because when you start having a fifteen thousand square foot lot, which we probably have very few of. They usually go from ten to fifteen, from ten to twenty.
There's a lot of seventy-five hundreds out there, fifty by one fifties, yeah.
Yeah, right, and, and, and so if you're going to come up with these complicated formulas, it needs to be something like you need fifteen thousand for one. And then if you want to have the so many thousand square feet for the next one, but you have to have at least a minimum size
Right.
To have a giant horse, start there.
Right.
And I did watch this council go ahead before the state stepped in and, and negated what you did was twelve thousand square feet for an ADU, but we didn't call them ADUs at that time, we called them second units. And this commission went ahead and codified that and put that into the, into the rules and what that did was it wiped out thousand fifteen hundred quarter acre lots. So having an ADU is one thing, that's state controlled, having animals in here is another control. And I have the nicest people in the world that live behind me. And for fourteen years, that rooster would wake me up about four-thirty in the morning, I don't know how you slept through that, uh, Chair. Um, and she came to me sadly one.
Rooster and four dogs.
And the four dogs next door, the small herd, and she came to me one day and said, oh my God, the rooster died and, and it was really sad, cause I couldn't contain myself, I said, oh my God, I can't believe it, I'm so happy. And she was kind of hurt and, and that was not intentional, I didn't mean to be rude. Tormented at four-thirty in the morning with this rooster for fourteen years. I should have checked and saw what, um, a, a weapon discharged inside the city and, and a rooster would have been in court. Um, because I, I really think that you need to take a look at this. And the other thing is, is that when you get into this, please don't do this and settle this, this way now in one issue. Make sure you combine it because we're going to go through a very lengthy general plan. And since we're going to go through this general plan, let's don't piecemeal it, okay? Let's, let's try to coordinate this thing all at once so we can get these things in, so I'm hearing things I'd never heard before. Agricultural land use within the city, I didn't know we had a special designated zone
We do.
For growing oranges, but I think what we should do is we need to take a look at that, see how valid that is. Cause maybe we have too many different designated little zones and one point three acres doesn't appear to me to be an agricultural lot, cause the rest of that wouldn't be contiguous, you, you couldn't have a big area on Daly Montgomery where it circles in. I mean, I could see if we had a big block of land with big acreage, but we don't. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe I can interject a little bit because Mr. Daddy had a very good point about the, the general plan. Uh, the general plan process is going to take eighteen to twenty-four months, say, and, uh, we'll, we'll be looking at things on a macro level, at the same time.
An exercise in vagueness.
An exercise in vagueness could be, um, but that, that exercise in vagueness, um,
aspirational.
develops the, the picture for us to focus on items such as this. But we do need to proceed with a lot of these sorts of ordinances and, and they will be continuing to come to the, to the planning commission over, over time.
I think when there are, it's, it's long been my philosophy, I've expressed it to a lot of people over the last five years at least, that you should be able to do whatever you want with your own stuff, as long as it doesn't bother the neighbors. And if it does bother the neighbors, then get together with the neighbors and settle it. But where the code is silent, there are no rules and somebody who doesn't care to get with the neighbors is free not to. And I think that's why we need something like this.
Correct, correct. Um, one thing I did want to, uh, point out is that as part of the general plan process, upon the conclusion of the general plan, we'll be doing a zoning consistency study to, so we'll, we'll continue to do our day-to-day work, uh, this, the Title Ten, uh, update, uh, while, uh, doing the general plan and the planning commission will be intimately involved in that process. And then at the conclusion, we'll hopefully weld all of that together and have a consistent general plan and zoning. So I think it, it, it does kind of come full circle with what Mr. Daddy is saying.
Right, okay.
Can I add one question, Devin, because it's very important that the assistant manager brought this up.
And, and, and again, what I say is don't take little chunks, take big chunks. So we have fourteen giant supersized lots on the east section of the town, the northeast section of the town.
North Signal Street for that matter.
Well, we got fourteen acres across the street, so can we, and, and I'd like you to take a look, cause you do the zoning and the land use, that's what your commission is for. How are we going to allow or disallow riding academies, boarding stables, all these other types of things? So now you're taking other people's horses on because you have, it's not your pet, you're running a business. So when you take a look at this, figure out how much of this is a business and how much of it's personal use, because, you know, what are you going to do? Because if you went back to the three per acre, I could have forty-two horses across the street. So, um.
As, as we mentioned at the outset, commercial animal keeping is another area where the code is silent right now.
Well, and that's, and that's why I'm telling you, like you say.
You need to fix that.
We can, we can have a chicken farm, we can have a rabbit farm, we can have a, a dog breeding, we can give horse lessons, uh, we can do all kinds of things, so please be careful and not pinpoint in macro everything, make it a little broader where you, you know, you combine some things in, cause I, I'm not against the emu and, 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 and the roosters and the dogs and all this stuff and all that stuff. What happens when you move out in the country? But there really needs to be, as you say, rules keep good neighbors, good neighbors.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Uh, the last card I have is from Souza Francina. Welcome. We're graced with two city council members here tonight.
I think one has gone. I shouldn't tell on him, anyway, um, first of all, we have three commissioners and you have a daunting task in front of you. I was greatly relieved when the city council sent this back. And the more I listen, the more I realize that it's, uh, there's complications. I think we need a lot more public input and I'll, I'll tell you why in a moment. Um, so before I, 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 I have a little speech prepared, but I wanted to, um, Elizabeth, oh, she's, there, there you are. She made me aware of, um, something I think you should have. It's the Ventura County Watershed Protection District Groundwater Section Guidelines for Preparing a Manure Management Plan. So I don't know if you're familiar with that, okay, so I'll maybe share, and I can maybe send you a link to if you, you know, just give me a nudge if you, if you want. Cause that was, I found that to be really helpful, Elizabeth, and I, I really intended to provide you with it sooner, but, um, been very busy. So, um, just so you have some background, I'm the city liaison to Ventura County Animal Services in Camarillo. I go to all the quarterly meetings and in addition, I'm the moderator of the Ojai Valley Animal Kingdom, we have about four thousand members. I am also, um, I participate in a lot of meetings with local animal rescuers, advocates. And so I'm well aware that there are people in Ojai that live in a private residence that have up to ten, ten little dogs, you know, or one, or many more, several large dogs. The problem, I cannot emphasize this enough, there has to be some reasonable, uh, restriction on the number of animals. But I can tell you from personal experience, one neighbor, one irresponsible, an irresponsible neighbor with one dog that they neglect that barks twelve hours a day is a lot more trouble than someone like me. I lived across the street from you, Commissioner Quilisi, and I had three pot-bellied pigs, not all at once, two all at once. But I had them, you know, a series for, uh, for the whole twelve years that I lived there. I had chickens, I had, um, multiple dogs, multiple cats and probably a lot of miscellaneous animals. I had a, we had an accidental rooster, my daughter thought she brought home all females, but one day we heard the first crow. But so, but no neighbor ever complained to the best of my knowledge, but every neighbor in that neighborhood was impacted by this dog. She bought, um, the dog as a puppy and it was neglected from day one. I was, I was, the police came to my door because I trespassed on her property trying to help the dog and then she got, you know, there's a whole saga. But I can tell you that it's the, I, I, I'm not in favor of the numbers, uh, where it's the, on your term sheet, on page, uh, attachment A, page three. I would be really careful about the number of animals, I think there needs to be more criteria than what's listed here. Um, and I would absolutely remove the word unit from, I don't want to see the word unit anywhere in this ordinance. An animal is not a unit, it's a sentient being and it's, you know, since this was, some of this language is just so outdated back from where we used to, you know, gas thirty, forty dogs, there's now, there's a whole different philosophy, thankfully, as far as the people's, I think society's attitude toward animals. Um, and the, the world is changing, more and more people want to have chickens, they don't want to support factory farming. Uh, when I was on, briefly living on Shady Lane, the neighbors had, I love the sound of the, the chickens, it's one of the most relaxing sounds in the world. And, um, you know, people have big backyards there and there was a rooster, I don't mind the rooster. Um, what else? Oh, I, I, I don't know, uh, you know, when it, when this, by the time this comes back to council, uh, I'll definitely be better. And, you know, there's so much here, it's my understanding that the, um, beekeeping is already, that will be baked into this ordinance. Um, people, more and more people are getting goats, so you're going to see this in people's back, back, you know, people who have enough space. Um, so I think we, this is a, I, I, I see this as a, as a very important ordinance and if we do it right, it'll help us get along with our neighbors, you know, for decades to come, it'll also look to the future where, where people, I think, will have more animals. And, um, we, Ojai is one, it has a spay neuter ordinance, so we're not going to have, um, you know, uh, what, what's the word, what was that you said?
Puppy mill.
We're not going to, puppy mills in Ojai, but, um, I think we can come up with a really great ordinance if we bring in more people that are more knowledgeable, just like, um, Elizabeth and David have really educated me about hor- horses. I'm not knowledgeable about horses, unfortunately. Um, I did send it to Jolene at the Humane Society and I'll probably go in and discuss it with her as far as the number, you know, the kind of problems. Cause I think we should look at what, what, have there been problems in the city of Ojai with animals? Like, is it mostly, isn't it mostly barking dogs? And I, oh, that reminds me, I do want to look, that's why I couldn't, um, solve the problem of the barking dog next to me because I also, uh, found out that I needed three letters or three signatures and none of the other neighbors didn't, they didn't want to. because I also found out that I needed three letters or three signatures and none of the other neighbors didn't, they didn't wanna get involved. So I don't know if that's our jurisdiction or.
That's Ventura County Animal Control Regulation, not a, not a City of Ojai regulation.
I don't know if we can do anything about that.
That's the same with, with vicious dogs, barking dogs, they require at least three, three complaints to.
Does that supersede, um, an Ojai ordinance?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't supersede, it, it just goes, uh, it, it has its, its own ordinance. And that basically protects people from malicious complaints.
I don't think it would supersede, but it would, it would apply if the municipal code is silent.
Right.
Correct, supplement, it wouldn't supersede, but it would supplement our ordinance.
Thank you, Souza.
The last thing I wanna say is that, um, our animal laws are still really very weak, our animal protection laws. I've gone to the Humane Society over issues that I considered animal cruelty and when they came to check, there was nothing they could do. So, um, these are all things that I'll be, be looking at in, in relation to all, all of this. I'm resigned that this is gonna take a few hearings, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna take a little, it's gonna take some real work.
How that we brought up the topic.
Yeah.
We may generate more interest.
Yeah.
I would not wanna settle this and say, here's the term sheet tonight, come back with an ordinance.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
I think we should, we should at least continue this for one more meeting.
Yeah, and I'll get, I'll try to.
Get more public input.
Yeah, you can have, and have the other commissioners here too.
Yes, that's.
Definitely.
We, we could come back with a, a draft, draft ordinance so that the commission could see, see it in a, in a format in which it will ultimately be. And the numbers can be changed, whether it's one horse per fifteen thousand square feet or one horse per twenty thousand square feet or two per acre. That, that's easily changed, but, but that's why I would, I'd like to bring a, perhaps not a, maybe a draft ordinance isn't the right term, but, uh, and a sample ordinance as a, and as an example for the commission to really see how it's gonna come together.
All right, thank you, Souza.
I'm still staring at point two under domestic animals, because, you know, the, what page is that on? Attachment A, page three. And I, I checked with Matt Summers if, whether I could weigh in on this and he said it was perfectly fine, the city attorney. So, um, you know, the, if, say that there was a situation, what, what happens if they confiscate the animals? They just, you just pass the problem on to the Humane Society or to the pound, it's better, there are other ways to craft this language so that the, so that it's not so black and white. You know, it's really the number of animals that someone can adequately take care of. And there's different, there's factors that, that, that influence that, so I'm gonna, I'll be, I'll be working on this language very carefully.
If you can enlighten us with, with more information from animal control or the county or state or whatever.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working, I'm working on it.
We'd be grateful to, to hear all of that. The number that a person can reasonably take care of is, at least in my personal opinion, way too squishy.
Right.
To be in an ordinance.
Yes, and then there's other mitigating factors.
So we need to.
You know, my neighbors have three big dogs and sometimes they're out all night barking and there's a huge chicken coop that's right next to my fence and there's flies all the time and.
Yes, that, that's a good example. You, I think we should put in the ordinance that animals, you know, there has to be something to address that they can't be outside barking. I would say that's one, a priority, in my opinion, the animals should be inside, you know, that's.
And then, I mean, you know, then there's another issue where.
They're not, they're not like livestock, a dog is not livestock.
There are cats in every yard around me and those cats are always out and they always in my yard. And I don't wanna cat, if I wanted to.
Animal magnetism.
Well, we now have a dog who helps keep that at bay, but, you know, I mean, if you want a pet, that's fine, you should take care of it and you should keep it on your property, I don't think, well, the cats have to wander, I, you're an animal person, I'm not.
Cats do wander, but you.
Then maybe they're not good domestic pets then.
There could be a, what do you call it, a patio.
You know, what, how do you.
Patio that's for cats.
How do you deal with that? If, you know, when I, I did not choose to have a cat, we all have cat allergies, so.
Yeah, that's, well, you can, maybe something that could be solved with a, what do you call it, a cat patio? And I, cats are really smart, if you took a hose to the cat, I think it would get the message.
It takes more time to get out there and turn the hose on, the cat is much faster than that.
And I say that.
Trust me.
Yeah.
Tried.
Okay, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Souza.
Okay, and I will work on this some more, thank you.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, go ahead, you're still.
Are there, are there other members of the public who wish to speak on this matter or respeak? Is that what I'm catching here?
Can I respeak, real quick?
Yeah, please. Please enlighten us, but keep brief.
She brought up a really good point about how many, um, what's the appropriate amount of, of, of animals that any person could care for? And I would temper that with what is the appropriate amount of space, let's say, for example, a horse needs to actually live out its life as a, as a horse. If I hear dogs barking, which is probably the number one issue in, in town in Ojai, um, that dog's stressed. So the dog is not being properly taken care of and what tools do we have?
Improperly trained or something.
All of the above, right?
I live next to, well, two now, but it used to be four.
Right, so, so it's, it's just sort of looking at it from the animal's perspective, like if, if, if her relationship with the animal control, uh, down there and like if, if you have a horse, that horse needs X amount of space to live properly. Dog, cat, goats, so there's probably some metric that's been established that, that you, because someone who has fifty goats on a really small property is gonna complain to you, it's like, well, you're, you're taking my ability to have my goat farm. It's like, well, your goat farm actually can't live fifteen goats on a quarter of an acre, which half of that is your house, because it's been established that one goat takes this amount of space to properly graze and live and exercise, et cetera. So I'm pretty sure that metric exists, I don't know what it is, but, um, that might be a good avenue to work with Susan, try to figure that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
See, we have a non-speaking member of the public so far, do you wish to speak on this item?
Well, you know, I didn't plan on speaking.
Well, if you'd like to, please come up, give us your name and address and.
I happen to be a horsewoman and a real estate agent, so I do agree with the two horses per acre, I think that sounds very reasonable. My name's Julie Fox. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there being no other members of the public who apparently wish to speak, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Yes, ma'am?
So, this is a suggestion. I read through my packet and I had comments and then of course, listening to the public. I think a good place to start would be to create some categories where we know they need to be addressed or we need more information.
Okay.
And some was just mentioned, but one of them would be, this would be to ask staff that we need to have some research done on the minimum or optimum acreage per different animals. And I think we should go through the list of, there's the kind of the domestic dog, cat and the small animals like birds and what have you that we have listed. But then there are also, you know, like horses, cows, goats, sheep, chickens and what have you. Pigs, absolutely, yeah, I'm putting pigs in, I may have missed something. Um, and I also wanted to say, I love animals, I, um, uh, have had goats, I have chickens now. And I will say that I do live outside of the city limits, I'm in the sphere of influence, I always like to be clear on that. But in other places where I have lived in, I've had dogs and cats and birds and what have you. So I'm, I'm in favor of them, but I'm also, I completely understand how the impacts can affect the neighbors and that we do need to, you know, provide some parameters here, so I just, I wanted to state that and be clear. So that was number one, was to do the research and find those numbers, whether it's through, um, some other communities that may be similar to ours and look at some different ordinances, um, we may even.
Be surprised if ASPCA has.
Yeah, the ASPCA or even, I'm just thinking even some of the agricultural schools like Cal Poly has ag, they have ag departments and there may be, you know, that information is out there, I'm sure, we just, it would be really helpful to have it. The other thing that I think is really important are the impacts. So that would be, you know, the noise, the flies, the dust, the manure, um, water quality, et cetera. And then another thing I think that we may wanna consider to put into the ordinance or have it as a supplement or, um, somehow address, we point people to that direction, would be to have best management practices. Or even a reference of like where to go to get that information, because I think that's, that sounds like in some instances, the step where people aren't doing anything or maybe they don't know where to go or it's not being enforced. Another thing would be that we wanna look at is enforcement. So, you know, we'll go with the assumption that, you know, people are going to take care of their animals, depending on how many we allow. But there's the docking, uh, docking, barking dog, um, you know, the roosters, the peacocks and what have you, which I'm not opposed to, but they have, need to be in the right place. But what's the mechanism that is efficient, um, for the community for enforcement? And I know we just, we heard about, you know, the three complaints, maybe that isn't, maybe it's two complaints, I'm not sure what it is yet, but I think it's something we need to look at.
Maybe it's one, because sometimes it only has impact.
Well, maybe it is one, maybe it is one. The thing I think we need to look at too is, um, we talked about, um, the lot size that would, you know, efficiently accommodate an animal. But then we might also wanna look at or just consider zoning of like where the lots are. Um, that may have, have an effect on, if you lived in, if you have, um, you know, a certain zone, some things may be exempt or some things not allowed based on that. So, um, I don't know, I think I, I covered those areas, but I feel like those are the, the most important and where we need to do some research.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bobby?
Um, uh, in listening to all of this, it seems to me that, that it makes more sense to address impact rather than numbers per se. I mean, there's certain things where you can say, okay, maybe a horse needs X number of square feet. But, you know, if somebody has a myriad of, of, you know, like a whole menagerie in their yard, and this happens. Um, and some people are prone towards that. The thing that, that's most concerning is, is the impact rather than what they actually have. And that, you know, obviously goes back to how they're maintained and how they're taken care of, and I think.
And how sensitive the neighbors are to smell or dust or water runoff.
Or having cat poop in every single one of their vegetable beds when their daughter's pregnant and that's dangerous. So there's all sorts of things that, that really need to be looked at and I think the impact is the most important thing here.
It's, yeah, I would agree with you, but it's hard to measure.
Of course.
Right, and I think that's where, um, you know, it, maybe this isn't for every animal, but when you start getting to like a horse or the goats, you know, what's the optimum square footage or lot size to accommodate it? It, it kind of dovetails into the impacts, because if you have too many, then yes, you, the, the problem may start.
Right, or if you have mice, dogs, cats, birds and everything else, then, you know, they're small, but they add up to a large presence also.
Right, so we have a lot to review here, I mean, we're talking all the way to.
It is complicated, right.
Small animals this big to, you know, a horse and everything in between. And, and what their needs are, um, a lot of times they need shelter or, you know, how does that fit in and.
And we've been counseled in the past by animal control to actually call them first and let them, I think probably they've, they've had a lot of instances where it can cause stress among neighbors and, and they feel that if it's a, a neutral body, as opposed to somebody who lives there, that, that it has a little bit more authority and maybe is a better approach. Ideally, if, it's great if two neighbors can talk to each other, but sometimes that doesn't happen.
But not all neighbors are willing to compromise either.
Exactly.
I'll agree with you completely on that, that's why I think we need to have some rules.
I do.
Yes, I agree, but I, I, I think that, you know, whatever they are, the goal is to mitigate impact.
The other thing that I think we ought to recognize here at the outset, the, the only place that animal, the, the two places where animal keeping is currently in the code, one is in the land use tables that we've all been working through and the other is in the definitions section in ten dash two. And in the definition section, animal keeping specifically says this is non-commercial. And so there's the whole commercial animal keeping industry that is another, another potentially serious area where the code is silent. And I think at some point, we need to come up with, with some kind of guidance to the community on that.
And I'm just trying to remember.
Like this, this horse thing that we had going on in earlier testimony, it seemed to me that was a mix of commercial and non-commercial uses with animal keeping.
Right, I'm just trying to remember, I know when we were going through the code, um, we talked about the animal keeping and this very topic kind of loosely, and I was trying to remember.
Yeah.
Um, when I was reviewing this, this week where it showed up, oh, here it is, animal keeping.
It was in four, two, or?
Page, attachment A, page eleven of fourteen.
Eleven.
And this is, um, on item number four, yeah. The land use, agricultural and open spaces permitted, agricultural and a CUP in open space. But that, but yeah, that's what we're talking about.
But I thought animal keeping did occur in, that's table two, six. I thought it was in table two, four as well.
I think that's where we were defining it as more like residential, but not a, not as a business, I know we had this discussion, right?
Have to go back and do an electronic scan of the code again.
Go to page two of fourteen, um, animal keeping there?
Okay, yes, it does occur. So that's in all the residential properties.
Mm-hmm, except for.
R two, R three and RS, can you explain to me, staff, what those are? Is R two, R three, is that two and three acre parcels? Or are we talking about they're getting smaller and smaller and RS?
I believe those are, um, smaller parcels, um, with, with higher density.
Right, and this gets backed into the.
Okay.
The zoning, maybe where they're at.
Correct.
And the lot size.
And those are some of the things where we're gonna, um, have in this ordinance ultimately is, uh, specific zoning standards may prohibit, uh, farm animals.
Right.
In all of the R one, regardless of lot size, so someone may have a large lot in the R one, but because of the nature of their zone.
Cause where it's at, yeah.
Exactly where it is, and, um, and that's, I don't know where I was going with that.
As a, as a point of clarification and just for information, if you look directly above on two of fourteen, you'll see that R one, R two, R three, RS have their proper descriptions, so if you're looking to.
That's right here, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You weren't here when we started this Title X exercise and we had requested that perhaps ours get reformatted the way they, they do in San Luis Obispo, so that you don't have to look for animal keeping in twelve places, but you have that and every single type of land of zoning. And then it's all in one, on one sheet.
Single table where the columns encompass all the zones in the city.
User friendly.
Right, you're talking a ma, like basically a master use chart, essentially that covers all of the uses.
And we looked at, we had a sample from.
And it was so easy to read and easy to understand where you could do what, that it seemed.
Yeah, we all liked it.
Pretty obvious that that, that's how they should all be done, so.
R two.
San Luis Obispo.
I would also preface that the city that I worked at, two cities ago, the city of Riverside, had something.
Similar.
Very similar and it was very user friendly.
Yes.
Which, it's good for, I mean, it's good for us, it's good for staff.
Makes it clear for, yeah, absolutely.
It's like, I know, you know, people have said, well, I don't know where to go, I'm on one page and then I'm flipping around, I can't find this and, but to have it in one place is, it's good.
Yeah, one of our goals clearly is-
Yeah.
-to make the code more understandable to the citizenry.
For everyone.
Okay, so-
Yeah, so back to-
I think at some point we need to talk about commercial animal keeping as well as non-commercial, but maybe you ought to just stick with the first one.
Mm-hmm, and just have a note, a note that we should do that at some point.
Keep it in mind that we're gonna have to talk about commercial animal keeping.
Absolutely, I think there's a lot to digest, certainly. Taking it even in pieces is, certainly staff is encouraged by the conversations that have gone on today, and we can certainly, I've been taking lots of notes, notes.
Good.
Can bring back, like, like Joe was saying earlier, can bring back bits and pieces and even start to dissect some of those bits and pieces and see if, if some of that stuff does hold water or if we need to look at other bits and pieces.
Right, and I don't think, you know, we want to go around and count how many animals everybody has in their yard. It's just when it becomes a nuisance that that gives you something to go by. I mean, there may be somebody that has more, but it's not a problem, you know what I mean? And so, I think it's always, for me, the goal of, of what you're doing needs to, should be stated, whether it's in an ordinance or, you know, any kind of regulation, so that you understand what the purpose of that is. And the purpose is, A, to treat the animals well and B, to be good neighbors. And, and you have to always look at those things, and I think they should be stated in every ordinance, so we, somebody doesn't come back fifteen years later and says, what were they thinking, you know, what was the point of this? That, that's what bothers me is sometimes there are things that I've run up against in business or whatever, and I'm thinking, this is not logical, how did this start? And if it were clearer, we would know. I mean, there's dairy laws on the books that make no sense today, I don't know where they came from.
Right.
So, I, I think for me, that's always where I'd like to start, is what, what's the goal?
Right, and I think you stated them very clearly, the animal welfare, and then of course, you know, want to be good neighbors and live in community.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I think one other thing that might be included in that list of goals or purposes of a, of an ordinance of this sort is the, the semi-rural nature of the city. The historic semi-rural nature. I, I think that, that having farm animals within the city limits-
Is okay.
-is okay, it should be okay.
Absolutely.
But, but within limits.
Right.
Right.
That kind of ties back into our general plan and, and, you know, what's the vision and what's presently in the general plan and, and, you know, what's to come. But, you know, generally we talk about this rural community and it's, that falls right into it.
Part of the community is hearing crows, or hearing roosters crowing in the morning.
Yes, and I was very happy that my neighbors had chickens.
There's at least one in my neighborhood.
Flies I was getting in my yard, right in that corner.
I like fertile eggs, but we may want to say the rooster can only be on certain, in a certain zone and not in others because of the small lot size and the density. I don't want to make it complicated, but I, I understand the issues-
Yeah.
-as much as I love having a rooster.
We've had discussion tonight about limits on number of, numbers of large animals, which again gets into pretty squishy area. What about miniature horses? You get to have more miniature horses?
They were excluded somewhere.
Well, we'll have, we probably should have it in there.
Well, that was when we were talking about units and we were, did we have big units, little units or medium sized or half units or, or whatever?
I, I think our list-
I don't know that I really want to go that direction.
Yeah, we can have a fairly comprehensive list of the types of animals that will fall under this, and of course, you know, it's, I think the exotic ones would be exempt, there's, there's a list, I mean, we, we will need to address that, there's a list in there of exotid or protected species that you don't certainly want somebody to have, or they may be very extremely dangerous.
There's a list, what, in this term sheet?
Yeah, there was one in the term sheet that had, you know, like crocodiles and alligators and pythons and cobras. You know, I mean, there's, you know, and we should have that in there.
Well, it talks about wild animals.
Well, yeah, but sometimes people, you know, illegally or somehow acquire them, but we need to make sure that's in there also.
Carnivora.
Right, and then there's also, if, if there's something unusual in, you know, they, they go come and-
Elephants.
They need a director's exam or something. There used to be an elephant, Suzie will remember Tara, remember Tara? But she, she wasn't in the city limits, but she was, but she came down here, she was, yeah, everybody knew her, Tara. She was like walking, we'd be walking down the street or the highway with her owner, of course, but it's pretty cool. It was an exception.
Uh, chapter four, title fi- of title five, in the very beginning of the term sheet here, talks about licensing and nuisances mostly with regard to dogs and cats. Is there a requirement to license cats in the city or just dogs?
I don't know, I'll find out and I'll have that answer at the next meeting.
I think it should just be dogs, but that's my opinion.
Some cities require cats?
Spoken like a cat person.
Sherry knows.
The code just says dogs.
Yeah.
Over the age of four months.
Okay, dogs over the age of four months, but not cats.
But not cats.
Some cities do require licensing of cats.
Cause I've never seen an identification on the feral cats in our neighborhood.
No.
And we have at least three.
Cats can be good, they're very good for rodent control.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, and, and there's also an argument that a lot of people don't like cats because they kill wild birds.
Oh, yes.
In some communities, their, their wild bird population has been decimated.
Have to be careful where you put the bird feeders, so the cats can't get to them.
Yeah, so, this is complicated.
But I, I think, I think we need, I, I think we, we need at this point to go through, as Commissioner Nolan suggested, and go through the term sheet paragraph by paragraph and at least try to give staff some general guidance as to what to come back with.
Or do you need more than, than what we've discussed already?
Well, I think for-
Or do you think we should go through?
For example, if you have, if you have horses, there should be some lower limit, or I've-
A minimum?
Uh, there should be a lower limit on the size of property on which you can keep a horse.
Right, and so that-
And if you keep a horse or horses-
Yeah.
-then you need to do what Ojai Valley School does, and that is clean up the manure at least once a day, water down, whatever to, to keep the dust down.
Right, and that's kind of what I was trying to portray earlier, was that, you know, if staff came back to us with the research on, just say the optimum acreage or square footage per animal, BMPs that, best management practices that would address the impacts, et cetera. I mean, there's more to it than that, but I think those are like two really good places to start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we've, we've essentially hit all the points in the term sheet.
Okay, yeah, I think so too.
Um, going back and forth and, and we can come back with, as I said, not a, not a, I don't want to call it a draft ordinance, but an exhibit in the format of an ordinance, which the entire commission could, could address.
Which then five of us with more input from the public.
Correct.
Yeah, we can keep building on it.
And then the next time, the next time we can actually bring the draft ordinance, and, and there's always going to be some tweaks to that, but we'll have had some more public input.
Good.
Those will be, when we bring that public ordinance, let's say the two meetings from now, that will be publicly noticed, and, and everyone in the community will, will have the opportunity to, to attend at a public hearing. This really wasn't a public hearing, they were allowed to speak, but not a public hearing for testimony, it's just input.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And then on page, attachment A, page three of four, where it says it's unlawful for any person owning, releasing one household to own or keep more than three adult dogs or three adult cats. I presume it's three small animals, not three dogs and three cats?
Right, and that, that's one of the things that, that I'd like to get some feedback on, whether now or at the next meeting. We talk about, it, it used to be a, a more, a stronger line between farm animals and domestic animals, but now people want chickens in their backyard, is that a, it's not really a farm animal, but it's not really a pet animal either. People want them for eggs and, and whatnot.
I mean, we could call, we could have- I heard you say, we almost could define-
Exactly.
What, what's the domestic or small?
Small, uh, small pigs, people have pigs, miniature horses, miniature cows, I understand, pygmy goats are popular. So, there's, there's-
A pygmy goat.
There's a lot of those animals which could be considered, and maybe instead of domestic animals, we call that pet animals.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And, and, and as, as Chair Quelosi mentioned, that's within, well within-
That's very domesticated, yeah.
Correct, well within the, the rural nature of, of Ojai, of the community.
Right.
Whereas other cities, the city I came from before was a very suburban community and it was very, there was a strong distinction between what could be allowed in a, in an R one subdivision HOA type of circumstance versus the outskirts, the larger lots were, were more agricultural, and it was a very, very well-defined line.
One of those, one of those impacts that Commissioner Corbin was talking about, I think, is noise.
Right.
When I was young, my family raised rabbits. We raised them because we liked eating rabbits, but they're quiet.
Yes, they sure are.
So, that, I mean, we could have had conceivably any number of rabbits in a quarter acre-
And no sound.
-in, in coops and no sound at all.
Just poops.
There could be a manure, a manure control problem.
It's good, yeah.
But, so I think we need, we need to make it clear that we're, that we're, that we're trying to make some sensible regulations that have to do with noise, with odor, with dust, with smell. Is, is there any other?
All of those, yeah, we said the fly control, which is a result of the manure.
That's, that's true, yeah.
And there's beneficial insects that work very well for that, but I think when we get into the BMPs, I'll bring that up.
Okay.
But, anyway, and we said dust, we said noise.
Right.
I think we got, I said that from the get-go, I think we got it.
The, I, I-
We can always add to this.
Yeah, I, I found some of the things in this, in this collection of items called term sheet that were almost laughable, that-
Correct.
Top of page two, second item, open watering containers shall be designed to, they don't become breeding grounds for mosquito larvae. I had a neighbor once who raised mosquito larvae.
Why?
Because they had fish, and they fed the fish with those mosquito larvae, and so they had concrete pens with, with very fine screens over them, so that the neighborhood wasn't inundated with mosquitoes, but they'd open it up, scoop out some and feed the fish.
Hmm, interesting.
And the neighbors had no problem with that, though it could have been a problem if it wasn't properly maintained.
Again, impacts versus numbers.
Again, the impact, right, exactly.
So, on page three of four, about halfway down, where we say a maximum of fifteen domestic animals, small, talking about small animals, and, and maybe, maybe on something like that, we don't have a number because what's the difference between fifteen and sixteen guinea pigs and who's gonna, who's gonna really enforce that? So, maybe that's one of those, one of those items where we, where we address impacts. We say small animals kept humanely, which do not-
Right.
The, the animals we're talking about there are, you know, they weigh a pound-
Correct.
-or less, that kind of thing.
Like a hamster.
Uh, if you're starting to talk about pot-bellied pigs, they can get to be pretty big, or even regular pigs, they can run to several hundred pounds.
Correct.
I'm not sure how many you want running around the neighborhood.
From what I understand, even the, the smallest miniature pigs are, are no, no lighter in weight than a hundred and ten pounds, they're, they're the smallest ones. So, when you see people advertising things like teacup pigs and things like that, those are just immature pigs, they don't, they don't really exist, they'll, they'll still get to be at least a hundred and ten pounds.
In other words, you can't hold it in the palm of your hand.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So, so the, so the things, sorts of things we'd have to, um-
I think, I think it would be useful within, within this exhibit or whatever, to try to, try to make some lists of what we consider large and what we consider medium and small, but-
Correct.
Understanding that they're gonna be kind of squishy categories.
Correct, and they will be.
And that the, the control still has to do with manure, odor-
Yeah, the impacts.
-flies, the impacts-
Right.
-are still gonna have to apply to all of them.
And, and we'll be relying on some of the ordinances of, of our neighboring semi-agricultural cities.
Yeah.
Santa Paula, I'm sure has something similar, probably very similar.
To check.
Fillmore, I think those were, those will, will help us in our research.
One of the things that I noticed in this, and I, I don't mean to pick nits with, with what you put together, because there's a lot of interesting thoughts in here that we all should be considering as we try to put something together, but the, the area of fifteen thousand square feet occurs more than once, and I'm, I'm curious how many lots we have in the city that are larger than fifteen thousand square feet.
It's like a little less than a third of an acre.
Yes, well, that's a little more than a third of an acre. Third of an acre is forty-two or forty-four thousand.
Forty-three thousand, five sixty, yeah.
Forty-three, five sixty, okay.
So, fifteen, three does fifteen, so it's forty-five.
So, it's a little over a third of an acre. And that could be appropriate for a lot of animal keeping, but not necessarily horses. I don't know.
That's why we're, they're gonna put that chart, list, do the research for us, yeah.
My lot's about twenty-nine thousand square feet, and by a, by the standard of one for every five thousand, I could have six horses on my property, which would be ridiculous.
Correct.
So, we don't want to go that direction, I think.
Right.
I think if we, if we say there's some minimum lot size to have large animals-
Right.
-and we'll have a list of what constitutes large animals, and you can have two, something like that, those, those general kinds of parameters would appeal to me.
It'd be something like two, two large animals and six small, and we're talking again farm animals, six smart farm animals and maybe six, any combination of six dogs and cats or something like that.
I think once we have that information, it's gonna help us figure this out.
Right now, the definition of animal keeping in the code specifically excludes dogs and cats.
Correct, and I think that's because-
And the domestic.
And I'm wondering, do we think that we should change that?
Well, that should be domestic.
Yes, I think, because I think that they need to be dealt with in terms of impact.
I would agree with you. So, I was a little surprised when I, when I went back into-
Right.
-into title ten and found the definition of animal keeping.
Can I, I just, do you know how big the lot is behind you, where the horses are? Where, yeah?
It's one and one-third acre.
Okay.
One acre.
Okay, and how many horses did they have?
At, at the peak, they had six horses, four goats, a pig, two dogs, and a handful of chickens. But I have to remember, so I didn't get to do that.
So, the property on Daly that affected us was one acre point three, and they had at its peak, because it fluctuated, six horses, four goats, a pig, handful of chickens, two dogs. But I do also want to say that they were holding public riding lessons, although they claimed that they were not, but I think most people who were in the horse community would agree that they were. So, that added to it as well. I mean, when you have three or four students running, riding around in a ring that hasn't been watered down, that's a lot of dust, instead of just some family with, you know, their kid rides the horse.
Occasionally, yeah.
Occasionally.
Okay.
Can I just say one more thing? Don't forget the rat lady in Golden West, so small, small little animals can have an impact.
Yeah, they do, you're right.
The rat babies?
The rat lady, they had five hundred rats.
Oh, the rat lady?
They were pets, she said they were pets.
She related to the duck lady on Signal Street?
I don't know about that, but little animals can have an impact too.
Right.
Yeah.
That was terrible.
Piggyback on the commercial discussion that in, I had a little, maybe a lightbulb moment, but maybe not because I don't do this, but if it was a commercial operation, wouldn't they have to file for a CPU, a CUP? A CUP and act, and actually file for a business license?
The code is actually silent on commercial animal keeping at the moment.
I mean, my, my.
That means there are no rules.
My gut, my gut instinct for town is that if you wanted to have a riding, um, a riding, uh, I don't even know what you call it, a riding academy, and you were teaching horseback, again, it comes back to impact, right? So I'm, I'm, I wouldn't say I would be opposed to it, but generally, given that I, I feel like I know town pretty well, there's probably some exceptions, but for the most part, I would say like, there is no commercial anything from, in regards to animals in town. And if they, if someone does petition for that and, and wanna file for a business license and a CUP and all that, well then.
There would be a business license requirement already on the books, but.
Yeah.
In terms of keeping the animals themselves, the code is currently silent.
Right.
Right, but, but from a commercial perspective, I'm saying like, they're actually, they're actually utilizing like a riding academy where there's children coming in every hour and there's, yeah, so.
Would have to be in the right zoning.
Right, yeah.
The zoning would have to be looked at.
Yeah.
If, if in fact it would work, and hopefully at some point we'll, we'll address it. I think we need to.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I think the metric was two horses per.
One, you needed the minimum of fifteen hundred square feet to have a horse.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Sorry, and unincorporated venture.
Yeah, fifteen thousand for one horse.
So that one and a third acres, they could have had four horses by that standard.
I think it, I. Three, or, or, but I, I think that that does not count, like if you had a twenty-eight thousand square foot house on your, you know, it's, it's in relationship to the actual usable area.
Total.
Not the, not the, there's the lot and then there's the house and then there's what's left, right? So, so that's kind of like what is, in my mind, defines the space to properly care for and husband.
That's true.
Right.
That.
A horse or whatever.
It even has it on here, you know, lot area.
Then you might be in a position where if somebody wants to add on to the house, they have to give up the animals?
Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Half a horse has to go.
I think it's animal husband with impact.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of that.
Yep.
Oh, good.
Um, this, uh, in, in the, uh, term sheet that you gave us, and I thank you for all the detail that's in there. I, it's, it's not an area that I'm familiar with and I was very glad to see all the detail. This table XX talked about swine, including pot-bellied pigs, um, for use in project on any property. I, I did not understand, does that mean that if it's not a project, like a 4H project or something?
Yeah, that really, and that.
You can't have a pig or even a pot-bellied pig? Would that be what this would say?
Correct, correct. That's what we're looking at. Um, not knowing the flavor of Ojai in terms of how they operate, and I'm learning as we go along.
Yeah.
We credit, I've been here for a month.
All of us are.
Uh, but not, not necessarily knowing the flavor. This would certainly, I think, would need to be, um, massaged, um, heavily. Uh, and certainly we're, we're open for, for discussion for that as well. I think going away from the 4H Future Farmers of America, the FFA, is probably a, a good thing. And looking at it from the standpoint of, you know, how many makes sense, maybe per square foot on the lot versus.
Whether it's a full-time pet or, or it is a F, or 4H project that's temporary, it's still the lot size and.
Yeah, and it's not to say.
That's particular ant species per square feet or lot size would be the, the thing that you'd look at first.
Right. And the impact is the impact.
Yeah, exactly, the impact's.
Correct. Regardless of what it's being used for.
Then there's this thing that says, um, that animals other than cats and dogs shall be maintained forty feet from any structure used for human habitation other than the owner's residence, so.
So that means on a fifty by one-fifty lot, you can't have any?
Exactly, because you'd be too close.
I'm wondering, and we kinda said this earlier, instead of going through this right now, that we get that information, we request it, it comes back to us, not that we can't use this as a reference, but it almost feels like we're starting over.
Right, but at least it, it opened, it, it adds, it helps, yeah, it, it, it brings up questions.
It opens up questions, yeah, it brings up the questions.
So that, that was good, that it, you know, brings up questions.
I would almost, yeah, like to see the, the new information before I even start making any.
And, and if we talk about, if we talk about lots with an area of fifteen thousand square feet, it was, the point was made very well here that you could have a fifteen thousand square foot lot with a ten thousand square foot house on it.
Right, and you've only got the remainder.
But, but as, as this, as this sample stuff is written, the size, the size of the actual open space on a parcel is not mentioned.
It's.
Only the overall size of the parcel.
But it's saying, um, square feet of lot area doesn't, to me, that means the open space that's not occupied by a building. Is that my interpretation?
Is, is that a legal phrase or?
To me, that, that's how I interpreted it.
Yeah, it's the entire lot, so you're taking.
Oh, it is the entire lot.
It's the entire lot, so if you have a fifteen thousand square foot lot.
Okay.
Um, you fall within that category.
Stand corrected.
But the, the, the nice thing about this is that also, and this is something that I've, I've seen in, in other ordinances and other codes in other cities, is you can then begin to framework some of those standards regarding the corrals and the stables and the, and the structures that are required to house those, those animals and the setbacks that, that go with those. And that begins to define really the number of, you may be allowed to have eight or ten, but the way in which the lot's configured.
Right, and your setbacks.
You're suddenly into maybe, maybe one or two.
Exactly, and we have to put all that into the mix too.
And, and you have to still abide by the overall regulations within the city in terms of building a structure, unless you're going to make, make a concrete stable, you're probably talking about wood and then.
Oh, you mean the fire?
Then you're talking about fire, you're talking about setbacks from property lines and all of that stuff.
Height limitations.
Height, yeah, it's true.
Thirty-five foot.
Two-story stables, but.
Yeah.
And not to complicate it too much, but, uh, but I will. Um, pipe corrals, things like pipe corrals, wood corrals, do not require a building permit.
That's right.
So, um, that's just another thing we were, we've also been speaking about where locations of, uh, of sheds and things like that. And how do we address setbacks? Because those are structures, they're non-permitted structures and, and we would have to bake that into this as well.
And that definitely needs to be a category that we're gonna be looking at, as you have clearly stated here. Stables, corrals, pens, enclosures, and et cetera. This is, this is good, a good start tonight, I think.
Yes, I think it is. Um, top of page three, there's the phrase required yard, yard area. I wasn't sure what that referred to. Was that the open space portion of a lot or?
No such deal.
I don't know the provenance of that.
I think the yard area is referring to the entire lot itself, but it's broken it down into, it's, the wording is, I will have to admit, is a little bit clunky in that, in that particular instance, and we can certainly go in and clean some of that up.
Okay. Um, I do think, I do think that we ought to establish a requirement, it doesn't have to be an expensive permit, but if you wanna build a corral and a stable, there ought to be some sort of city oversight of your doing that. And at, at the very least, making the applicant aware of all the rest of the rules that go with putting any kind of a structure on your property.
Correct, and we can probably do that through a zoning clearance process.
Okay.
It's, it's not necessarily a building permit, but it's a flat fee zoning clearance.
Yes, I remember that from my remodel, yeah, okay.
So.
Um, where it talked about, uh, domestic animals, the first, the first sub-bullet there talked about within a single-family home or multi-family residential unit. So if you had a duplex or a triplex or an apartment building, let's say an apartment building with eight units, that this, this particular thing would say those eight units can still only have three dogs or whatever the number was.
No, each.
I'm wondering, as a matter of philosophy, is that, is that something we wanna do?
Well.
It, it, it may be poorly written, but I, but it would be per unit.
That's what I thought, yeah, per unit.
Twenty-four dogs in that little apartment house.
Correct. Under this.
And it, then it would say within a single-family home or within each unit of a multi-family residential unit. That's what you're saying now?
Correct, correct, which, that's what it should say, and we, and we would clarify that for each unit.
But landlords these days typically charge a fee to have a pet.
That's almost self.
Or ban them entirely.
That's almost self-regulating.
Or ban it, yes.
And if it's a cat, who can tell who it belongs to? Dogs have owners, but cats have staff.
And oftentimes, a large staff.
Yes.
A large office space.
Large birds.
Extended office space, I should say.
Okay, don't.
I might note that in one, in my previous city, one of the, um, most time-consuming, uh, animal issues we had was a neighbor who had a, a parrot, a loud parrot, which was left on the patio all day.
They're almost as noisy as peacocks sometimes.
Parrots, peacocks, roosters, and, and that, that was a, a big issue, uh, for us. It took a lot of time, so. Well, again, when we talk about these things, it's, it's what, what is the impact?
With, with the discussion that we've had tonight, I think we've covered a lot of this.
Yeah.
And, and I just wanted to ask one more question about something because I, I think the likelihood is that if you come back with an exhibit, as you called it, that a lot of this language could, could wind up in it. And that's great because it's, it's good stuff. Um, I'm looking at page four of four, the first complete bullet there, I did not understand. It sounded to me like you can't have more than we allow, but if you do, it's not a problem. And, and so I must be misreading.
Are you?
No, it's, no, it's, right there.
Oh, the post. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, will not result in any adverse impact on the neigh, yeah, it was a little awkward.
That's, oh, animal keeping permit findings, okay, but that still says we have a limit on how many you can have, but if you have more, that's not a problem. Or we could decide, we, whoever we is, could decide it's not a problem.
If it will not result in any adverse impact on the neighboring properties or the environment.
And would that be a director's exemption kind of thing again?
No, I think it's a, it's a wording, it's a poor wording component here.
I think that needs to get reworded, yeah.
I think you're right, I think it needs to be reworded.
Well, it.
Cause it's a, it's a finding component, not necessarily something where it's saying you could still have it over. You're looking for the justification for the number that you're looking at there, right?
And are findings, what, um, I, I know that at times findings are what the commission does, certainly the city council does, are findings something that staff does? And if so, on what basis?
Yes, certainly, even with director's exemptions, we're looking at specific findings and justification for that, um, for that argument for the item itself not going to, uh, public hearing, certainly. We've gotta justify ourselves as well, absolutely, accountability.
I'm still a little worried about exotic animals, but I think we'll have to come back to that one. It does mention reptiles, and I'd be nervous if somebody had cobras or coral snakes or pit vipers.
But it is unlawful.
In my neighborhood.
I, I.
The top it says it's unlawful, doesn't possess them.
Maybe it'd be good to have that discussion and get some feedback because when, when I was thinking, when we were discussing this, I was thinking about exotic and wild animals, as someone having a, a pet tiger, maybe for vanity reasons, that this, they have their, their fancy pet tiger.
Well, we get Hollywood people up here, I'm sure some of them have pet tigers.
It could be. We had one in, in the previous city, it was actually in the county and it escaped and it walked through the subdivisions and unfortunately had to be euthanized, which is very sad.
I remember hearing about that.
Tuffy, I think is his name, or something like that, but, um.
On the other hand, I have seen people, I've known people with aquaria that contain snakes rather than fish.
Correct.
And it was not a problem.
Correct.
And so an outright ban, I'm not sure would be appropriate.
Correct, and, and the, the example which was given to me when I was discussing this with somebody else was, what if someone rescued an old circus tiger that had been declawed and defa, or de-whatever? When, and just needed to live out its final years in a, in a peaceful area? That, that might be appropriate for the community, um, so maybe we might wanna consider a, a, a permit process for exotic animals. It would be very rare.
For exotic rescue animals.
Maybe exotic rescue animals or something like that.
I like having the rescue part because you, the other part, it's unlawful for you to have those species and then it feels like the only lawful way that you would acquire them is if they were in a zoo or like a wild animal park or, you know.
On the other hand, if you have an acre lot and you have a barn and there are bats in the barn.
Well, you didn't.
Can you argue they're not your bats?
Well, you didn't intentionally bring them, and those are feral.
Yeah. Well, have we, have we excluded, have we excluded feral animals from this ordinance?
I think those are just animals, birds. Community animals, raccoons and opossums and whatnot.
Yeah, all those, raccoons and coyotes.
As long as we're talking about wording, let's think about that part of the wording.
Correct.
That's a good thing, a good thing to mention, the feral.
Have we, have we beat this horse to death?
No pun intended, yeah.
I think the pun was intended there.
Okay. Thank you. Good discussion though, and I look forward to seeing something back from you. Um.
And we really appreciate the commission's input on this because it helps us, we have a lot of experience in other communities, but we, we want this to be right for this community.
The commission and the community, I think it's, it's important that we work, work certainly hand in hand in trying to get this.
Yeah.
The, the rules are certainly gonna vary from place to place, and at least we all live here, or have for a while. Um, in terms of the Title Ten cleanup, item four, I'd feel better if we did this with all five commissioners here.
Especially would like Kathy to be here.
Right, Kathy Lottis, yeah, with her planning.
If it's, if it's all right with, with you two, I'd, I'd like to just continue it to the next.
We continue it?
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with that.
The next time we all get together, and I'll keep all of my little tags and we'll.
We can keep our notes, yeah, I've got notes too.
All right, so let's go on to item five, director's decisions. Anything in here that you wanted to ask staff about? Looked like it was pretty straightforward this time. Uh, when you talk about pruning a tree, this is cutting, cutting a branch that's more than four inches across or some such because that's otherwise prohibited? Is that what we're talking about?
For the tree ordinance, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I have one very simple question. On, uh, the back page of the director's decisions, the last item, it says miscellaneous permit, um, address assignment for a new SFR, what is it, what is that?
Single-family residence.
Oh, thank you.
Right, single-family residence.
Should've figured that one out, but I didn't, okay. Thank you.
You actually have to get a permit to establish your address? Okay, you look at the, look at the lots on either side and you at least know what range you can work in, but.
The code determines it.
Right.
I'm sorry, the code?
Right, the code, we, the municipal code actually makes determination in terms of, of your address based on what side of the street you're on, what area of the city you're on as well, makes that determination. I just looked that up this week, I was, I was curious as to what that meant.
Yeah, okay. Item six. Um.
Thank you.
So we're looking at, um, you say discussion items, ADU code update. What's, what's the, the boundaries of the discussion there? We have, we have a table, a rather extensive table right now with six different kinds of ADUs.
Right, so we're, as you know, or maybe you don't know, uh, there are new ADU laws that are coming into play. They've been signed by the governor, um, those gonna go into place on the first of January of twenty twenty. And we are bringing our code up to date with those, those reg, regulations and those standards. We have staff working on these minor, I would call them minor revisions to our existing ordinance, and that'll be coming back to you, this commission. I want to say it's at the next meeting for a recommendation.
December fourth, yeah.
Yes, for December fourth.
Great. And, okay, the Condor Self-Storage people will be back.
That was continued to a date certain, but we may end up recontinuing that.
Okay.
We're still working with that.
Yeah, we're working out some of the bugs, I guess you could say, just to make sure that we've got everything in line here for you to consider.
What's the issue with AT&amp;T at 202 West Ojai? Oh, that's where the central office is for all the landlines.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Come to us before.
What's coming up?
Well, the consideration is they're looking to have a hundred percent reduction in parking, but their numbers are showing actually there's still a requirement for 1.5 parking spaces. So our recommendation is that it not be a hundred percent reduction, that they still provide parking. The parking lot, you're talking about the parking lot itself?
The parking lot.
The parking lot itself is north and east of the.
Was owned by AT&amp;T.
Correct.
And so if they're asking for a reduction.
They're looking for a hundred percent reduction, essentially so they can sell off
Sell that property?
Correct.
Oh, and we always have parking. We seem to have a lot of parking issues.
Correct. We can't really deliberate on it this evening, but.
No, no, I'm just curious what the issue was.
That is the issue. They want to dispose of that lot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that is their only parking.
Right.
Within the current restrictions of the code, they are on the same block as a number of offices, restaurants, and other businesses with a central, this is in the block bounded by Ojai Avenue and Matilah and Blanch and Kenyatta, I guess, right?
I think, yes, I think so.
Mm-hmm.
There's parking in the middle of that right now. Is that sufficient to handle all those businesses?
We're analyzing that. We're analyzing.
Yeah, we're looking at the.
Private parking.
Analysis and recommendation.
Right.
1440 Daly Road is the humongous thing.
That was.
That's the one we looked at.
That's the one where we had a concept review.
Yes.
They're want to build a house up on the side of the hill.
No, this is the DRP.
In the middle of the agricultural.
One thousand-foot asphalt driveway.
Something like that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so we have, assuming they haven't changed a lot, we've seen this before.
Right, it's a concept review.
We weren't too favorable.
Pardon me?
I said, I don't think we were all that favorable about the concept review.
I know some people thought the house was too big.
Well, I just, yes, or there was too much, it was too invasive on the property. We probably shouldn't discuss it till it comes back, but.
Okay, and then later in December, Title X, mm, boy. Okay, Boku, oh, the World University, 106 Pauline, conversion and remodel? What sort of conversion are we talking about there? This is down at the bottom, future planning items.
Yeah, we're still trying.
It's a multifamily zone, and there's three units, and they want to add a fourth unit and remodel the old three.
Okay.
It's next door to Emerald Iguana Inn.
Okay, thank you. That helps me because now I know which one that is.
Okay, and the SLRI. I did not distribute it to the rest of the commissioners because you're not supposed to do that.
Yeah.
But I got an email from Ben Warner suggesting that we or somebody in the city sign an MOU.
No, no, nobody has. May I comment on it?
Yes, please.
Okay, good. So, two things, and this would be new to you. We had a presentation on the Sustainable Living Research Initiative. We actually have had it twice at Planning Commission over the last several years, and it's been waiting on the future list.
Once was in July of this year.
Right. So number one, I would like to request that in our January meeting, we could have that on the agenda. It's going to be updated. And then the second thing was about protocol, which kind of ties into what Steve has, and maybe you can give me some feedback on this. So at our two previous presentations, it's evolved some, and there's a draft out right now that I believe Ben Warner sent to you.
Ben Warner sent me a draft MOU, I think, and a reference to a law firm that is willing to handle it in some fashion.
So I'm thinking maybe that the protocol wasn't correct, and that it probably should go to our planning department.
That email to Joe.
Oh, you did, okay. So.
I don't think that the Planning Commission as a body could sign an MOU with an outside organization anyway.
No, I don't think, they're not asking that.
What's an MOU?
A memorandum of understanding.
So basically what it is, is it's a draft, and what he was looking for was for the Planning Commission to look at it, review it into common, and send it back with the intention that when they, if they get on the agenda in January, they would have perfected the draft for our review. And ultimately, it would be for the Planning Commission to look at and then make, hopefully, well, they could deny it or make a recommendation that it would go to city council. I've been happy to meet with you, talk with you, wanted more information. I know because you're probably going, what are they talking about? But any, so that may be appropriate. But I think my, the two requests are, one, could we agendize it for January, and then the second one is to make sure we have the proper protocol for disseminating any information or not, just to make sure we're doing, it's being done correctly.
And the most recent iteration of a presentation to the Planning Commission was in July, but I don't believe that that presentation per se was a part of our packet. I think it was just presented on screen.
Right.
So I don't know if that presentation exists in a form that either of you could look at to get an idea of what is SLRI.
It actually, it was videoed, so we could send a link if you wanted to. But it has evolved since then, and so that draft was more, if you had some comments, and then the one that would actually come in January that would be on the agenda would be further revised.
Okay, and the MOU would be for the purpose of saying?
Reviewing it, and did we?
Yes, the city would sponsor the concept of an SLRI, not putting money into any particular activity.
Right, and we couldn't actually make that, but we could make the recommendation that we think it's noteworthy and that it should go to city council, and then they would ultimately look at it, review it.
Yeah, it would be their.
Yeah, there's a funding source associated with it potentially. So, yeah, I think it's just, I just want to make sure we're following the right protocol as far as disseminating information and asking for feedback, or if that is okay to do or not.
Probably going to require at least one time asking the city attorney, what do we do with this? So.
But right now, it is being vetted by an attorney, just to let you know from, and then, yes, down the road, it would have to go to the city attorney.
Well, the email that I got cited a law firm, which I presume has.
They're in the process, yes, yeah.
Vetted the MOU, but it remains to be seen whether we like what's in it.
Right.
Okay?
Maybe you can advise. I hope it didn't sound too crazy, but.
I'll look into it.
Oh, and we have a joint, we have a joint meeting with city council in January.
Feel free to contact me for more information.
Thank you.
And so we'll talk about topics at our next meeting to discuss with, and.
Oh, you're on the next page, here we go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But. Since we've been preempted twice in a row now.
We didn't meet at all this year. This will be our first one.
Right. We've been preempted by special, by closed sessions twice in a row. All right, and we're keeping, anything else that?
That's city council.
There it is, July 17th, it says, on the fourth page. That's when we had the SLRI.
Okay, yeah, and you said that, July.
We could watch the meeting, too.
Right.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know how that works. If somebody does a presentation, I guess then Jeremy will make sure that the presentation is in the video.
But it's.
Right?
Yeah, the PowerPoint, yeah.
The presentations are always in there for city council.
James help.
We have a special guest.
I also wanted to make two announcements if I can. So, yeah, so in the videos, we do make sure that the PowerPoints are shown, so we can, I'm familiar with it, but we'll make sure we go back and look at that meeting and get everybody up to speed. The other thing I just wanted to announce, I may have missed it, I watched most of the meeting, but we did enter into a $719,000 general plan update contract.
Oh, good.
Which is a big deal for us, and the Planning Commission is going to be heavily involved in that, so we'll be working with you guys, and I also think that helps line up with that January joint meeting with council. It'll be a good time to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we had actually said that several meetings back when we were coming up with talk, but then we kept saying, oh, what's our involvement with the general plan?
Yep, and we're finally at that point where we can answer that.
Perfect.
So it'll be, we're moving it forward. And then the last thing, which isn't necessarily very interesting for the public, but we do have the commissioner dinner coming up in December, so I wanted to make sure everybody, everybody got your invite, December 13th.
Friday evening, I did get mine.
Unfortunately, it's a Friday the 13th.
It's at Soul Park, not at Sazadi Park.
Exactly. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's move on to item seven, Planning Commission liaison. Ray is not here to report on two city council meetings ago. I'll make my report from last week as brief as possible. In public communication, oh, first of all, there were two major topics that came up. Public hearing on a resolution to increase the TOT.
Right.
And that wound up with the editor of the paper spoke up, or the publisher of the paper spoke, and one of the big things that has to be determined is defining what the TOT applies to. The hotel folks around here want to be part of that discussion, and they don't particularly care what the rules are, but they need to know what the rules are. Some places, it's just the room rate that TOT applies to. Other places, any money that you spend on the property for anything that goes on on the property is subject to the TOT, and so they don't care. They just want to know what the rules are so they can stay legal. The council eventually approved 5% and promised that they would use that money for specific things, but that's not in writing. The capital improvement program, code enforcement, fire mitigation, and those things, and Councilman Haney was concerned that there was a body of opinion out there that the city council could not be trusted to spend the money wisely. And I have communicated with him to indicate that, you know, if TOT generated another $300,000 a year, a big number, I don't know if that's even realistic, and if that money were fenced, and it's only fenced if it's in writing on the ballot fenced, to be spent only for specific things. I've seen state governments do this over and over again. They'll say, we'll get this bond issue, and that money can only be spent for schools. Well, if it's a million dollars a year for schools, that's a million dollars they don't have to spend from the general fund on schools if they chose to do it that way. So, in a practical sense, it's not a real limitation.
Can I add a couple of points? Because it was a long discussion, and we talked about all sorts of different options. So, we did end up actually putting in the ballot language that we're going to limit it to being used for certain things like fire mitigation, code enforcement, climate mitigation efforts, and probably missing a bit with streets maintenance. Thank you.
Yes.
So we are going to actually limit that in the ballot language, or put that in the ballot language, which will limit what we can actually spend it for. It'll have to go into the CIP and not into our general fund.
Right.
And then, just to speak to the other issue, too, because there's a lot of questions coming about this right now. I think it's a big change for people, but, and the 5% is a substantial sum because our city, our bulk source of revenue is transient occupancy tax for our city. And the other issue is that the clarification that I think that the hotel owners are asking for is that, I think there's like some confusion, because some people say that we charge TOT on everything at a hotel, which is not accurate. It's for anything related to the occupancy of the room. So if, you know, if you're.
But other cities do it different ways.
So, I haven't seen that other cities do it much different. There's, the challenge is every hotel has unique fees or calls their fees something else, and so the example is resort fees are a big one that are discussed. They didn't exist when we wrote our ordinance, so we're trying to now redefine it to say resort fees explicitly are taxed. We've always, we've always thought they were subject to tax, but it didn't say it in our ordinance because our ordinance was before that word existed. But some hotels will call it an amenity fee, or, you know, you can make up any word really, but it's like if it's, yeah, if that fee is related to your occupancy of that room, then it's typically subject to TOT. And, but there are, you know, there are some ones that are, you know, debated and discussed, so we agree that it's better just to get everybody on the same page. We're going to have a meeting and do some guidelines. So, but, you know, it was, I think, like, it was a lengthy discussion, so it was.
It was. I was out of town on the 12th.
Oh, yeah.
But I spent a good part of the weekend watching.
Yeah.
I watched it, too, one night.
Been a long meeting.
Till 1:00, I was until 1:30 in the morning watching. It was, it kept going on.
Chair, if I may add one thing to that?
Councilman Blatz, yes.
I just want to add, the decision, and I unfortunately was away on Tuesday, too, but I 100% support the decision. I was at my own birthday dinner, watching the council meeting on my cell phone, so talk about a birthday dinner. But it's really important that everybody in the city, public, and especially all of us who are entrusted with handling city government, understand that the decision that was made on Tuesday has a couple really big implications. We're moving the election up from originally December of next year to March of next year. That will substantially increase the amount of money we can recover under the increase in the transient occupancy tax, because that adds about eight months' worth of tax collection. In addition to that, by doing that, we earmark it, as you were suggesting, but it also requires a two-thirds vote of the public. And we're highly confident the people, the citizens of Ojai, understand that this tax is important for our budget, but also because if we don't pass a tax that attaches to the transient occupancy nature of our city, then it's going to have to come somewhere else, and it's going to come out of the pockets of the citizens. But we don't have a lot of time. By moving this up and increasing it to 15%, we just want to make sure that everybody is on board and understands it, and we're already kind of behind the curve and getting the campaign started, if you will. As a city, there's very strict rules we have about how we can support a ballot measure, but what we can all do as private citizens is support it as much as we want, and it will be something that the city as a whole is supporting. But we just want to start getting the information out there so people understand it, because any time they hear a tax, they hear it's being increased by 5%, it's a little scary. But when they understand that this is how we pay the city budget, and it's how we keep it from having to be an increase on sales tax that disproportionately affects the citizens or other types of taxes, we want to make sure everybody understands that. So, it's good for everyone to start getting people informed out there so we can get a big level of support. And this is one of the, really, if we can get this passed, it's going to put us consistent with other communities. We're not going to be, you know, not competitive in the market. Probably should have happened a long time ago, but the amount of money proportional to our city budget is really substantial, and there are a, really, a lot of projects that have not been able to be done and deferred maintenance on stuff that this will take care of, that this will substantially support funding for. So, I just want to let everybody know, we should all get on board with making sure the community understands it the best we can.
Okay, the point that I was making was, and I've seen this so many times with the California State Legislature, with the Ohio Legislature when I lived there, is that earmarking funds leads the. leads the voting population to think, okay, here's another five percent of TOT. So it's going to add whatever that number is to the things that it's earmarked for on top of whatever we are currently spending on those things. And that is not necessarily so.
That is absolutely true. What, what happens is the money that comes from that tax has to be earmarked for those, for that category of projects that come through our CIP portion of the budget, not the general fund, as City Manager Vega explained. And what it does mean, though, is that by adding that to the CIP, the remaining part of the CIP that is, could be used in a different category, can be moved over to other areas. Also, there's so much stuff in the CIP. We, it really is, it'll give some flexibility in budgeting all the way, but what it won't do is allow another council down the road, or a current council, or anyone else, to start misappropriating that money into areas where it shouldn't go. It's gonna be earmarked for those. And it may free up some cash some other places to do some other projects. But that, that, that's really the key thing.
It basically sets a floor on what can be spent on those fenced categories.
And it will, um, really support a lot of the projects that every year we have to make some really difficult decisions, that even with what is a relatively small increase and is very competitive in the way TOT has done in other cities, that will give us enough financial flexibility to get a lot of those projects done. And, uh, it, it really is, it's, it's been a long time, and, and frankly, on top of that, we had the T-Bid or the OTID, people call it different things, the Tran- the Tourism Improvement District. Um, that went away. So we're increasing this. Now, this is more than that was, but if you look at the net difference of where we were just a few years ago, it's not as significant as even five percent. It's actually really three percent, um, compared to where we were just a few years ago. And this money will not be used for marketing, like the T-Bid money or OTID money was. This will be used to improve our city. And because the people who come visit here are, are lovely tourists, because they don't pay taxes other ways, this is their way to contribute to our community in a fair manner that, uh, keeps us able to pave the streets and, uh, keep everything moving. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so that was the first major topic that came up to City Council. The second major item of discussion was whether or not a particular letter should be sent to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors and the Agricultural Commission requesting advanced public notification of pesticide application in the valley. The, the discussion, and between, between the TOT and the pesticide, there must've been fifty cards here. It was an extensive discussion that went on. And the discussion of the pesticide ranged from people who said, I'm concerned about pesticide in my yard, and I just wanna be warned that it's coming, simple enough to my way of thinking, to people who said, the farmers are all brainwashed, and we don't actually need any pesticide anywhere. Uh, so there was a wide range of, of opinions expressed in there. There was a, I think it was a third draft of a letter to go to the county supervisors, and the upshot of the whole thing, well, there were twenty-seven speaker cards on that one item. Um, the, the item was continued to the December meeting, and, uh, Commissioners, or Council members, Francina and Wirick are going to redraft the letter again, to make it stronger in places, weaker in places. It wound, I think it was mostly stronger in places, but not everybody agreed with that. Um, general plan and housing element update, as Mr. Vega noted, there's, they approved a contract of about seven hundred thousand dollars to consultants to help with that, and authorize zoning consistency analysis as well. Um, there was an update from the Watershed Progressive on California stream flow enhancement. And, uh, the city received, I think they said about a five hundred thousand dollar grant for planning and guidance on California stream flow enhancement. And, um, then there was, uh, extensive discussion on steering committee recommendations for the formation of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee. And I think the upsh- they, the, the council named a bunch of private citizens to go off, think about this, come back and say, how should we constitute the committee, and what should they talk about when they come back with recommendations to the council? And there was some discussion of, should we get rid of the people that are currently making the recommendations and get a new group? Or, or what? And they left it where it was, and they'll come back in six months and talk to the council about what should be done with the Climate Emergency Mobilization thing that the council passed a while ago. And we had heard from, uh, Mark Whitman talking about the Gables and their, their, uh, request to do eight single-family residences in part in place of twenty-six assisted living facilities. Chris Danch, I don't know if you know Chris, I served with him on a seven eleven committee for the school board.
Fire Safe Council.
He's the Ojai, part of the Ojai Fire Safe Council, and they are doing a survey right now for citizen input to fire safe planning. Uh, I think if you look up Ojai Fire Safe Council, you'll probably find that thing. Um, Ray Powers talked about, he said, potential closure of the Ojai Valley Organic Site Source of Mulch. This is a place down on Old Baldwin Road, off just this side of the river, and, um, the county, it's in cow- it's in the county. And it is going out of business. It has been, uh, a source of mulch for people all over the valley for many, many years. There's one guy that's worked there for more than twenty years, uh, and I don't know how long before that the place was in business. But evidently, there were a couple of things going on. One, that they were afraid that the shot hole borers were getting into the mulch and might be spread through the, through the valley. It's a place where people would take, cut branches and things. And then a couple of times a year, the people that ran the place would, would mulch it all.
Right.
And then they would make the mulch available, I think it was at fifteen dollars a yard, something like that. And then people like Greg Rents down in Miramonde were actually buying mulch from them at fifteen bucks a yard and reselling it to the public at thirty, which sounded like a pretty good thing for them. Other places, the price went as high as forty dollars a yard. But that's, that source of low-cost mulch is going away.
Well, they're trying to work something out, too, but anyway.
Yeah, the people that work there have been told that they're closing within the next two weeks.
That's too bad.
Yeah. Uh, I also heard, and I don't know how true it is, because it's just coming, you know, hearsay from the folks that work there, that the county had decided that they want, they were going to require them to mulch each day's input of branches. And they can't afford a mulcher, and they can't afford extra staff to be there full-time to run a mulcher.
They have a mulcher, but part of the issue is to control the shot hole bore.
Yeah.
The mulch needs to be ground down to one inch or less, and they don't have the equipment to do that presently.
So they can't, they can't mulch the way they were, they would be required to mulch.
But they, but then the county, um, was coming back and looking at it and saying, because that possibly if they did mulching every afternoon before they closed, or at the end of the day, that that might be an oper- um, that might work. But I don't wanna get into the details.
Would this fine mulching get rid of the borers?
Yeah, it does. Um, but anyway, uh, it helps control it. They can get up to a hundred percent control, and if it's over an inch, they can get, or between one and two inches, they can get ninety-eight percent control. But, um, I did get a, um, an email from the county that they were exploring some options, so I'm, I'm not sure exactly what's gonna happen. I don't know all the remaining details.
Yeah, that would be two dads will lose.
You may, we may not, but we'll see.
Well, I had my yard guy go over and get three or four loads of mulch on the weekend, 'cause there may not be anymore. And I, and he was told, this was on Saturday, I think, that they are no longer accepting new material for them to mulch. So that sounds like the end of the line.
Yeah, it sure does.
We'll see, yeah.
Anyway, so, there we are. It was an interesting meeting. It was a long meeting, and those two main discussions of TOT and pesticide took up most of it. Anything else to be covered? We do have our City Council Liaison here, Mr. Blatts.
I appreciate the time you've already given.
Okay, well, that's fine.
And your summary wasn't effective.
Well, I, most of what I do is pretty peccable most of the time, but, uh. All right, then.
I guess we should keep our notes, right, from the.
Absent, absent any objection, we are adjourned at eight forty.